I think everyone is here, right Mike? Are we all here? You are muted, just so you know.
Louise, everyone is here.
Okay, we'll just get started in a minute.
And we are broadcasting on YouTube Live right now too.
All right.
And Sidney Vakino is joining us. So we really didn't have everybody, Mrs. Breschowski.
Okay, well, I'm glad we waited then.
Right, Megan too.
Okay, very good.
Okay, Megan should be. Yep. How are you, Megan? How are you, Sidney?
Very good, thank you. How are you?
Very good, thank you.
I'm good, how are you?
Okay, I think we can start now, right? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our February 17, 2021 Board Meeting. Would everyone please rise to pledge the flag? Dr. May, if you would, give us a flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mrs. O'Day, can we have roll call?
Mr. Acker.
Here.
Mr. Azar.
Here.
Dr. Cadman.
Here.
Mr. Fleming.
Here.
Mr. Medenski.
He is here. Greg, are you muted?
I saw him here, so go on.
Yes, I'm here. It's I'm having trouble with my computer. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Mrs. Prusiteri.
Here.
Mr. Robson.
Here.
Mrs. Tierney.
Here.
Mrs. Breschowski.
Here.
We're all here.
Okay, we're gonna go a little bit out of order. We're going to have the superintendent's report first before we approve the agenda. Dr. May, if you would, give your superintendent report.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Breschowski. As I have been for the past several months, I'm very pleased to be able to talk about a number of things. We have in-person instruction, which is our major topic tonight. But before I get to that, I do want to note that it is Black History Month. And I thought I would just offer, and this may not be known to many, a breakdown of our racial breakdown as far as students in the district are concerned. We are very much predominantly a white school district. But it was very interesting to see that we have, again, a breakdown of the racial makeup of our student body. I will say that there's been some many very exciting, very positive activities that have been going on in our buildings for Black History Month. I haven't listed them because I don't want this to appear as if, you know, we're checking boxes. We did this, we did that. But my very brief message on this topic tonight is that, you know, we must and will do more to hear and respond to the sometimes unheard voices of our students. And again, this is a very important topic for us. It's something that is incorporated into our strategic plan. And because it's Black History Month, I thought I would mention it, but only in the context of saying that we'll be talking about this topic much more in the future. So with that, the main purpose for my presentation tonight is to talk about in-person instruction in the school district. And I thought perhaps the best way to offer some context into that is to look at the COVID-19 timeline as it has occurred in Abboton Heights. We all remember back, it seems like a long time ago, to March 2020 through June 2020. All the schools in the Commonwealth were ordered to shut down, and so we had a mandatory shutdown to end last year. We began the year in all virtual instruction. We returned from all virtual instruction on October 5th. And from October 5th to the present, we have been engaged in hybrid instruction where our students attend two days a week. There have been a number of developments over that timeframe. We remember earlier, late in 2020 and early in 2021, the spikes in community transmission that took place in our community, in our state, and in our nation. We also, over that time, have experienced and read emerging literature that spoke in detail, in depth, about how transmission is mitigated in schools and also the negative impact of isolation and disengagement on children. An important development took place on January 20th when our staff, excuse me, when our staff received the vaccination. And we have had a very positive decrease in community transmission during the month of February. On that point, you could see that the high for Lackawanna, this is the Lackawanna County numbers. The high for Lackawanna County took place early in January with an incident rate of 376 and a positivity rate of 14.2. By any imaginable standard, this was extremely, extremely high. And we've seen, over the course of time, a very encouraging trend in these data where, as of the last announcement, which was Friday last week, we were in the high area of incident rate, but we cracked down below the, into the moderate rate for positivity. Both of these are important indicators of transmission of COVID in our community. To give a sense of what that looks like in the schools, in preparation for the meeting in January, I counted up how many cases had taken place prior to the third Wednesday in January. We had 28 cases up to this point last month. As far as this month, we are down to three. I do think late today, there was, there might have been a case that has, that I have to add to this, but there's a stark difference between last month and this month when it comes to cases of COVID within our buildings. And this is inclusive of both students and staff. So again, the topic for tonight is in-person instruction. And I do want to make a few points. First, many students are suffering academically, physically, and emotionally from detachment and isolation. We see this in many, many ways. Our numbers of failures, particularly at the high school and middle school, are through the roof. Failures of students with grades that are 50 or below are at all-time highs. We hear anecdotally of students who are suffering in many different ways from mental health issues. This is completely consistent with what we read is happening at the national level because of the isolation that students are experiencing in being separated from their schools. There's far more research and information is now available regarding the transmission of COVID in schools. We know a lot more today than we did back in the summer in August where we were so concerned about opening buildings and COVID spreading rapidly through our buildings and through our student population. But we are in a much better position now to understand what is happening with COVID in schools across the nation than we were at the start of the summer. I'm pleased to say that we've had many students return to four-day-per-week instruction. Most recently, we invited about 100 students back because of the challenges that many were experiencing with respect to their grades and staying engaged. And also, as noted before, Abboton Heights staff members have been vaccinated. So these are, again, some considerations for in-person instruction. And so from the beginning, and I think it's clear in our approach to sports and in the work that we've been doing, Abboton Heights has changed its approach throughout the pandemic based on new information. And I am suggesting tonight that a change in our instructional model now seems appropriate. So to begin the preparation for a possible change in our model, we sent out a survey, and I would like to share the results with the board and the community of that survey. First, I want to point out that we have 3,160 responses out of about 3,300 possible. That's an incredible response from our community. And we have a very strong sense that, you know, there was no ballot box stuffing. These were legitimate responses from our families. And, you know, as evidence of that, the breakdown of responses by school is completely consistent with those enrolled in school. You know, where the middle school and the high school are about the same. I was kidding Dr. Thomas that South Abboton Elementary is the only school that's punching a little bit above its weight. So congratulations to the parents at South Abboton for their tremendous response to the survey. Again, current enrollment status, we see about 66% of students who are currently participating in virtual instruction. Just under 30% are all virtual. And we have numbers of students, for various reasons, who are attending five days a week. But essentially, 65/25 for a breakdown of students who are all virtual and students, students who are all virtual and students who are in the hybrid model. Now, here's, here's the key question.
Dr. May, can you clarify, is the, are the statistics regarding all virtual instruction inclusive of charter students, charter school students?
No, Mrs. Breschowski, they are not. These are only students who are enrolled in Abboton Heights. So charter, charter schools, Catholic schools, all of that, none of those are included in these numbers.
Okay, so you did not send the survey to students at charter school? Because would you, is it possible that they would return to school if we were to reopen? We didn't go there?
Well, we do, well, we, charter school students, this survey was not intended for charter school students. I don't think very many, I don't think any really responded. It's possible that some did. But I think that it's safe to say this excludes students who are in cyber charters or in Catholic schools or in-person charters. These are only those who are enrolled in Abboton Heights. But there's a slide later on that talks about perhaps interest in students who are all virtual of coming back to school, if that's the direction. And we may be able to maybe get some insight into whether cyber school students would return based upon the reaction of those who are in virtual, who are enrolled in Abboton Heights. But again, there'd be some conjecture and speculation as we would have to interpret that data.
Okay.
Okay? And so we asked our families, you know, what is your preference? To attend five days per week, to attend four days per week, to continue in the hybrid model, or to participate in all virtual? And we thought it was very important to offer the caveat right up front. Currently, all students, and it's nearly all students, have six feet of social distancing in their classrooms. If we were to return four or five days per week, that distance would be reduced to as little as three feet. So given that, what is your preference? And we see that a full 50% of respondents want five days per week. Add to that another 15.4% who want four days per week. And we can see a very strong majority of our parents and our community members desiring more in-person instruction. There's about 18% who wish to remain all virtual and 16.4% who wish to continue in the hybrid model that we're currently utilizing. I will note, and I know later, that when compared to people who want more in-person instruction and virtual, the current mode that we're using is the least popular for the parents who have responded. And this goes to parents who are currently participating in the hybrid model. Because it's very conceivable that with, for example, a loss of physical distancing between students, individuals who are currently attending in the hybrid model may be prompted to move to all virtual. And so with that question of those who are hybrid, will this change prompt you to go to all virtual? 13%, 14% and 9%. So roughly a quarter think, to some degree, they may be prompted to change from hybrid to all virtual. Whereas the largest number do not think that that would prompt them to change to hybrid model if we were to come back with more in-person learning. Now, for those students who are all virtual, who are not participating in our hybrid program, right? Those who strongly agree or agree, which would be the, the, the blue and the red, right? A full 45% of individuals who are all virtual would give at least consideration and many strong consideration to coming back to school. And, and Mrs. Breschowski, I don't know if this would help you as far as projecting or maybe thinking that students who are in cyber would want to come back. But certainly, large numbers of students who are in, currently virtual, would give some consideration to returning to more in-person learning in our schools.
Dr. May, can you please read the whole question that they're answering here?
Yes. This question is for families currently participating in all virtual instruction. A change to four or five days in-person attendance will lead me to change to all virtual instruction. Or from all virtual instruction to more in-person instruction. So the question is, I'm in all virtual. Will more in-person learning, either four days or five days per week, prompt me to want to return to school? And we see that, this is the breakdown. So those who agree and strongly agree, this is the group that, who they're currently virtual, and they would be inclined to return to school if we go more in-person instruction.
This is Jean Cadman.
Yeah.
Was this group reminded about the distancing, the possibility of a distance change from six feet? It doesn't appear that the question includes that.
No, and I did not include it in this question. I'll have to double-check to be sure, because I can only see the screen. It cut it down so we could fit it on the screen. But we did make clear in the very first question that in-person question, in-person instruction, more in-person instruction would definitely reduce the physical spacing between students.
But again, possibly you did not make that clear.
No, I don't think it was in this question. I don't think that was, that was in this question. Okay? And then with respect to transportation, we are concerned about our ability to have capacity to transport students. So we asked, currently, my student does or does not require transportation two days per week? And then we said, well, if we go back, more in-person learning, we would see that there will be a greater need for transportation. And we'll talk a little later about, you know, our capacity, and that is among our concerns. And so we also sent out a separate survey to our staff. We did not include administration in the group. Taking the survey, you can see the breakdown of respondents. About 70% of the respondents were from our professional staff. And the next largest number was from our instructional aid and special education staff. And of that group, about 50% want to remain in the current model. About 44 or 45% of the staff would like to see more in-person learning. And a very small percent would like to see us go back to all virtual.
And this is Jean Cadman again. This question posed, again, does not specify that the mitigation strategies would be altered in order to accomplish this goal?
No, I don't believe that it wants. Okay? So some survey highlights here. 65% of families wish to increase in-person instruction with 50% preferring five days per week of in-person instruction. And on this question, I am sure we did offer the thought about the reduction of physical distancing. The others, perhaps not. 18.4% of families prefer all virtual and 16.4% of families prefer hybrid instruction. And again, this is the current model that we are operating under. 46% of students currently enrolled as all virtual may opt for in-person instruction. 24% of students currently enrolled in hybrid may opt for all virtual. Now, because we have more, even though the percent is smaller, because we have a higher percentage of our students in hybrid, these results imply a net small increase of students enrolled in all virtual should we move to more in-person learning. Two points I want to make on the hybrid model. It may seem like I'm beating up on it. I don't mean to. I do want to point out that Abboton Heights professional staff, through their devotion and determination, have delivered the best possible instruction through the hybrid model. They have done an absolutely great job. They have done an absolutely great job uh i- i- and having been asked to do something very, very difficult. And that is to be tethered to a machine with many students and then uh to have a number of students physically present in your class. This was a very hard thing that we asked them to do and they responded in a remarkable fashion. And also, you know, we read the news about conflicts that are occurring in different places and, and I really do want to note that the Abington Heights Education Association has been a constructive voice as the district navigates uh the pandemic. We certainly have not always agreed. In fact, we've disagreed on a number of points. But I, I do want to, you know, in a positive way, call out uh the association for, you know, their engagement, their positive engagement in this, in this issue. So as far as in-person instruction is concerned, uh detachment and disengagement are now increasing under our current hybrid model of instruction. I, I, I think that this statement is, is beyond dispute. Students are more at risk for emotional, physical and academic setbacks. We're seeing it. And it is my, in my estimation, serious consideration must be given for a prompt transition to increased in-person learning.
Doctor Mann, would you say that also holds true for students, you say students in the hybrid? What about students in the all virtual? What are, are their grades? Are they becoming disengaged and are their grades slipping? Uh, do they seem to be uh managing differently than the hybrid students?
Yeah, I, I should say, Mr. Brashowski, that, that many students are thriving in both the hybrid and the virtual model. Alright, but I, but I also believe that um significant dis- disengagement and significant emotional, uh physical and certainly academic setbacks are occurring to all of our students regardless of the mode that they choose uh for the delivery of their instruction. And so if, if we are to return to school, and again, this is an if, this is just the superintendent speaking, not the board who will make this decision. All in-person students would attend either four or five days per week. There will, there will certainly be an all-virtual option for all students who want it. Uh, however, the hybrid model of attendance two days per week would no longer be an option. So we will be asking students to either come back for more in-person instruction or to go all virtual. Uh, the idea of coming in and not coming in uh two days per week, we would not be able to maintain that as the third option. And again, parents, students must decide which options they prefer. Students will not be allowed to straddle the two options. That is to say, you know, I'm, I'm all in. I'm coming four or five days a week, but I'm, you know, on Thursday and Friday this week, I'm, I'm prefer to stay home, so I'm just gonna hop on virtually. That will not be an option. Students will either be back uh for in, in-person instruction or virtual. We would not see one people to kind of straddle between the two. And I, I want to go over a few of the challenges that we face, uh should we go for more in-person instruction. Uh currently, um we in most places in our district have six feet of physical distancing to the extent possible and we are successful in, in, in most of our classrooms. The clear exceptions, uh we have numerous classrooms serving uh students who have very specific needs and those needs require uh close uh physical contact or close physical presence. So we have a, we have numerous classrooms where uh the social distancing is not taking, the physical distancing is not taking place. Uh, on our school buses, uh we have not been able to achieve and will not be able to achieve six feet of physical distancing. Uh, in fact, uh we are at three feet. Uh, and sometimes we have students in the same seats on, on our buses. And, and absolutely, uh we are having winter sports and in, in all of our winter sports, uh certainly with wrestling and basketball, uh we have no physical distancing at all. In fact, in, in some we have, you know, aggressive contact uh between and among athletes both from Abington Heights and, and other school districts. So, physical distancing will be reduced to three feet in some ca- classrooms should we have a full return uh or a four-day-per-week return. Uh, inevitably, contact tracing of positive cases will result in more students in quarantine both in buildings and on district transportation. I will note, however, that we have seen very encouraging decreases in community transmission as noted earlier in the presentation. So when we say increases in, in quarantine, that's increases not relative to what's happening now, but rather relative if we had, we were maintaining the six feet. But overall, we hope to see less quarantine as community transition, transmission decreases. And six feet of social distancing will be achieved only to the extent possible. And I think it's very important that we're upfront about, about this possibility, this reality should we return to school. Okay, uh, under facilities, uh we will have to do if the board decides to go back uh four or five days per week, we will have lots of work to do. Uh, a lot of furniture and moving of equipment. And we're doing it at a time where unfortunately our staff is uh very much focused on, you know, managing the snow and the weather. It's very possible we may need to spend some money on temporary storage capacity. Uh, just, I have two quick photos. These are both of the middle school. Uh, this many will recognize as the auxiliary gym. And this, of course, is the cafeteria. And in the auxiliary gym, you know, leading up to the start of the school year, we pulled furniture out of classrooms in order to um allow for greater distancing. Uh, we will have to get underway in moving those, that furniture back. And the furniture that we are not going to use, we're, for instance, gonna need the auxiliary gym. And so we're gonna have to find places to put that, that furniture and those supplies. And this is from the middle school, but to one degree or another, this is true in all of our buildings across the district. This will require uh some significant effort from our staff. So, back to the challenges, uh transportation. Simply put, we have too few bus drivers. Uh, at the start of March, there will be three buses and that's eighteen runs without drivers. Uh, board will recall, we have a very efficient setup where we have a three-tier where each bus will have a uh middle school, a high school and an elementary run both in the morning and in the afternoon. So it's, it's not as simple as just saying, well, let's run the elementary route, you know, two times. Uh, because those buses are required to be in other places. We know from the survey and from our experience with an increase in four days per week for many students, that additional capacity will be necessary with the full return. I'm pleased to say that we're aware of two drivers who are in training. Another is expected back from medical leave and then we are out searching for contractors, drivers, potentially renting buses uh to try to address this problem, but at this time we have to be open to the possibility that some routes may not run for a period of time if we are to have a full return. And so if we were to go back, what would, what would that look like? Well, uh, if the board decides we're going back, we will need to send out surveys to parents. And we're going to ask our, our parents and our students to make a decision. And that decision is, will they be in-person or will they be all virtual? Uh, and we're gonna ask them to, at least for the quarter, uh, you know, stay in that and, and hold to that decision unless there's some extenuating circumstances. Uh, we will be preparing physical uh spaces in our buildings, moving furniture. Again, this all involves around a four or five-day return to school. I estimate that we can be ready um as early as March eighth. Even though there's a lot of work that will go into this, I think if we really put our minds to it as a district staff, uh we could be ready. And so.
Doctor Mann, you keep saying four or five. When, what's gonna determine whether it's four or five? And are we gonna hear the pros and cons of, of both?
Yes, well, I, I'm gonna have a recommendation at the end, uh, Mr. Brashowski. This, I, I put four or five only because those two were uh, that's what we asked for in the survey. Uh, so in the end, I will have a recommendation and we can certainly discuss the relative benefits of each option. Okay. And then, you know, as far as supporting a return to school, uh districts across Pennsylvania are increasing the amount of in-person instruction. Uh, schools at the local, regional, state and national levels have successfully implemented a full return of students. Uh, in the event of a full return, the district will still quarantine students and uh close buildings for short-term periods in response to positive cases. So we will always be able to respond uh in the event of such circumstances. And, and obviously, um, we will continue to adjust our approach based on changing circumstances. You know, we're often asked, or we often read about, you know, the variants of COVID and they're more transmissible and certainly uh, you know, if issues arise that make our current approach uh not appropriate, we will adjust very quickly, always as, as needed, as we've done, I think, through, through this entire pandemic. And so, you know, it is, it is my recommendation to the board that the board consider a motion to authorize administration to implement a five-day uh per week in-person return to school beginning on or about uh March eighth, twenty-twenty-one. And finally, the, the last slide I have is, you know, at this point in time, it's, it's not hard to find articles that support a particular point of view. Uh, so I, I tried to put up a variety of articles that I think are insightful. Uh, they offer different guidance. They're not all, you know, cherry picked to support a particular point of view, but I thought these are some really good ones for individuals who might want to learn more. And, and in each of these articles, there's a lot of links. So um, there's a lot of reading here for anyone who's interested and I just thought it would be appropriate rather than to go over these articles and, in discussion in the presentation, but just to, to put them here and, and have people, you know, take them for, for what they're worth. And so with that, uh, Mr. Brashowski, that concludes my report. And um I could either stop sharing the screen or if people want me to go back to reference a slide, I could certainly do that too.
So I think you are currently looking for guidance on whether or not we are ready to put that motion on tonight's agenda and where the board.
Yes. That is correct because we, we, uh, I, you were able, you permit, you permitted me to have my presentation before approving the agenda. And so if the board uh has a desire, uh we could uh put this motion or any motion or no motion at all onto the agenda for a vote as the meeting proceeds tonight.
Okay, um, this is um Michelle Tierney. I make a recommendation that we put this on the agenda for tonight.
Okay, does anybody have any comments or concerns they want? I mean, I, I.
Oh, I have plenty of comments, but I just thought we were gonna approve it or not.
I think what we, we need to know if we have enough members that agree that it, it's appropriate to put on the agenda. So you're right, Michelle.
Yes, I have plenty of questions, yes. Want me to start?
Sure.
Okay, okay, um, um, Doctor Mann, in your presentation, you talked about classrooms. And you said, to the extent as possible, uh, most rooms will be six feet so, uh, social distance. Are you saying most rooms? Are you saying some rooms? How many rooms? And then you said specific need rooms. Um, uh, those, in a normal basis, those would still be not social distanced. Is that accurate? It's not the size of the classroom, it's the level of education that is uh subjects to not being able to be six feet. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that, that is accurate. So.
Okay.
Our, our, many of our classrooms who serve special populations were, were, were nowhere near six feet of social distancing because of the circumstances in the room, not really the space in the room.
Okay.
Our school buses and our athletics are also areas where we are not anywhere near achieving six feet.
Alright, I just wanna stay with the classrooms.
Right, so to the classrooms, we will endeavor to achieve six feet. And in many classrooms, we'll be able to achieve it, but many, many others will be at five, four and as small as three. Uh, depending upon how many students are enrolled. Uh, we have many classes that are, you know, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six students. And should all those students return, and again, we know they all won't return, a number will be in virtual. Uh, the amount of distancing in those classrooms will be well below six and approaching the three feet.
Can you take, um, let's talk about middle school with the twenty-five, twenty-six students, because those are usually a norm, an average class in the middle. Are you using every single classroom now in the middle school? Because I know that there was another level where there was quite a few extra classrooms. So are you, you've exalted every classroom to be able to be six feet uh social distance with all of the middle school classes?
Well, we're not gonna, no, I, I think it's very clear and important that people will know that we will not be at six feet social distancing. Uh, and we will most likely be at four, five, and we have to be prepared for classes that are at three.
Uh, is that because you don't have the classroom space to change some of the rooms around? Or is it because um we, 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 we just can't do that? We don't have enough desks? What is that?
Yeah, that, well, first, the, the, the biggest problem is just the physical size of a classroom. Right? All of our classrooms, if you put, put to twenty-four, twenty-five students in our classes, and yeah, I, I think there'll be less than twenty-five because, you know, a, a, a quarter, uh twenty percent of our students will be virtual. And so it will be less than that, but we're gonna have large numbers of students in classrooms. And the physical size of a classroom prevents us from getting six feet. And, and we can't, even if we had extra classrooms, we would not be able to divide the class, say, in half and put them in separate rooms because then we would need two teachers, which is essentially the hybrid model of what we're, what we're doing now. So the, the issue is that we have, you know, a, a fixed number, a finite num- amount of space in a classroom. And one teacher there, and if we have, uh, you know, larger numbers of students in the classroom, just by necessity, the physical distance between students will go down.
Doctor Mann, I think equally as important as the social distancing is the ventilation in the classrooms and uh masking. And so obviously masking will be mandatory.
Right.
And what about our ventilation? Have we actually made improvements in our ventilations in each of the classrooms?
We, we have. Our, our ventilation is, is, is good. It, it really is. Um, and maybe at some point, we could have uh Mr. Elliot or others come in to speak about it, but I'll tell you in, in broad strokes, right? We keep our air exchange, our in, air handlers on high. That is to say, usually in the winter, uh, we, we don't want outside air exchange because when you heat the, heat the air, you don't want it to blow it out because it costs money to heat the air. We have it wide open in that we have full exchange going on all the time where we have fresh air coming in, into our buildings. We also make sure that we do, uh, our maintenance staff calls it a, a, a refresh in the morning where we turn the air on early to make sure the air is circulating through. Uh, so uh we've been changing filters. Uh, we have the highest-grade filters uh that are appropriate for the unit that they're in. Uh, we had, we, we've been cautious about not having two uh high-rated filters because having the wrong filter actually impedes airflow. So a, a great amount of work has been done uh to make sure that we have good ventilation in our buildings. And it's a, it's a very fair question and uh, you know, I, I can have a better report at some future time about the, the very specifics, but I know it's been a, a very important topic for our maintenance staff.
Um, couple more questions. Um, how would um lunch look like? What does gym class look like? What does the music wing look like with um singing and instruments being blown? And um lab classes, what will lab, labs look like?
Right, and all those things are, are uh being worked through with our administration. We're now, uh, like at the high school, for example, we have the single rows. Uh, we're making sure that we can fit in. We, one of the things that we really need to see is a response from the community as to whether people are gonna decide to be virtual or uh, full-time, should that be the decision the board makes. And then based upon that information, which we would hope to get out to parents this week, then we'll be able to make decisions about what does the cafeteria look like, what does the coral room look like? But we, we really are at, and we have ideas as to how to accomplish it. But the information about how many people will actually be physically here will be very, very helpful and central to our planning.
And do we have the staff um to be, uh, uh, the staff looking to come back? And will we have a virtual um teacher for middle school and high school only?
Um, our staffing is short. We continue to look for people uh to fill positions. Uh, the, we've never seen a lack of, of applicants like we have seen recently uh during this pandemic. Um, the approach for the middle school and high school uh in the near term, which I mean likely now from the end of the year, will be that our teachers will have to have students who are physically in front of them and simultaneously teach. students who are physically in front of them and simultaneously teach, uh, students who are home. Uh, we hope and expect that when we start in the fall, uh, we will have dedicated, in some fashion, dedicated teachers for those who are virtual and dedicated teachers for those in the room. But from a matter of just practical implementation, we will have to have teachers teaching both groups of students for the remainder of this year at the middle school and high school levels.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Razor?
So just to follow up with what Mr. Tierney was just saying, um, one of my biggest concerns, I, I've got two huge ones, like everybody does, but the social distance being inside of six feet, that obviously raises a lot of issues. But I think that something that we haven't talked about enough, and I know everybody wants to get back to school, and I do too. I've got kids in the school myself, but I see every day when I look through my kids' computers, hybrid teaching. Right? We're all talking about hybrid from the perspective of the kids. Um, if we go back four days or five days, hybrid's not stopping. It's happening, at least in the middle school and high school, it's going to keep happening. And I can't emphasize how not, uh, how much of a problem that will continue to be. It's, it's going to be a huge benefit for my family and for I know a lot of families to be able to get back to school more often, whether it's four or five days. But we've got a real problem with continued compromises for everybody.
For the kid. I thought, I think hybrid will not be an option.
No, what I'm saying is hybrid teaching.
So why, why will it be happening?
So when you walk into a classroom in the middle school, the high school, those teachers are still going to be teaching kids in the classroom and kids on a computer at the same time until we have.
I don't think, Dr. Man, did you say we are doing it that way? Or we're going to have an all-virtual teacher?
No, we will have all-virtual students. But we will not have all-virtual teachers.
Right.
Now, we do have that at the elementary level. Right? But we do not have that at the middle school and the high school level. Like for, for example, and this is maybe to help illustrate the problem, right? At, at the elementary level, uh, we have students who have the same teacher all day. Right? And so if the students who are physically present can have one teacher, if we have, you know, twenty, twenty-five kids who are all virtual, they could be assigned another teacher and it's separate and it just works, it works perfectly well. At the high school, right, uh, each student has five, six, or seven teachers. And those, no two students have the same number of teacher, very few, if any, students have the same series of teachers through the course of the day, because they may take, they may take one math, they may take an advanced science, they may take an AP English, and, and no two students are likely the same. So there, there, there is, a- at this point with the schedules running, no conceivable way that we could have a separate group of hybrid teachers and physical teachers to meet the needs of all the students at the high school. Now, next year, you know, our, our folk, as, as we're thinking about planning for a full in-person return, our extreme efforts are going in. So we recognize and we agree with Mr. Azar that this is not a sustainable thing. We're going to run our teachers into the ground if we have to continue this indefinitely. So we're looking for options and we will demand of ourselves to have options, uh, for, um, you know, uh, no hybrid in that trying to disconnect teachers from either, from both the computer and the, the physical classroom. And that's not an easy task.
We talk, I know we've talked about having a char, an Abington Heights cyber charter school. Um, I don't know, I, I don't know that we've made any progress in, in looking, you know, at that, but isn't that really what the solution is? Uh, rather than this hybrid model?
Yeah, I, I think, yes, i- in a manner of speaking, it, it will be. And so when we, as, as we do course selections now, right? And, and we say, okay, here's how many students want to take this or that class, then we could build a, a, a schedule that has dedicated teachers who are teaching virtual, or at least have maybe one or two periods a day that are all virtual. All right. Um, and, and in this way, we would not have teachers who are stuck doing both. Right? But there, there, we, we cannot, uh, retrofit the current schedule to allow that to happen. But prospectively, that would be something that, that we expect to be able to do in, in one way or another. So that's, that's the project we're working on now, but it's, it's not going to help us uh, with respect to getting through the twenty, uh, twenty, twenty-one school year.
So if I, if I could just finish the point, um, if, if you're, if you're a teacher in the middle school and you can confirm this, Dr. Man, you're going to continue to teach hybrid. You're going to have kids in your class, and now you're going to have more kids in your class and a few kids at home versus what they have now, which is a few kids in class in most classrooms and a lot of kids at home. And if we go five days a week, not four days a week, from the, from the teacher's perspective, like, and I completely echo what Dr. Man said in one of the slides, they've been heroic in what they've been doing. If you watch a class and you watch what a teacher has to do to relative what they had to do for their whole career, it's unbelievable what they're doing. And if we could go back five days a week, they're going to have to do that five days a week, not four days a week. So from their perspective, it's going to get harder, at least for the rest of this year, hopefully, maybe. And I don't know if this is possible, that was one of my questions. Certainly seems extremely difficult at the high school to develop any kind of virtual program for the rest of the year, but if there's any way to convert the middle school so that you can have dedicated virtual teachers. And I don't know if that's through, you know, operational changes, or if it's just through hiring, and I know how difficult the hiring is, but the faster we can get rid of hybrid teaching, we have to. We have to get rid of it. It's distracted teaching. This is what I've been saying to people for the last week, since I really looked closely at it. It's, everybody's distracted. The teachers are looking at the computer in the class, the kids that are in class are not looking at the teacher. They're looking at the screens. They're looking at the whiteboard. You know, everybody hears a vision of when we were in school of a teacher in front of a classroom with all the eyeballs on them. It's not happening. And then when, it will in the elementary school, that's the good news. I think if we go back five days a week in the elementary schools, and Dr. Man can correct me if I'm wrong, we have the opportunity for the kids that are in class to have a teacher who's not distracted. I- is that correct, Dr. Man?
Yes, for sure.
So, but in the middle school and the high school, it just, it probably can't happen right away, but it's, if, if we have to spend some serious money to do that, if it's within our abilities, I think we have to do it however we can. So that, that was the main point I wanted to make. I support going back. Um, I just want to acknowledge how it's going to be, it's going to be a bigger ask of our teachers for however long we continue doing hybrid teaching. Um, and it's not sustainable. So that's, you know, obviously, you know, you can't tell every problem, but those are.
You, you said a better than I did, and that is exactly true. Uh, there's, there's not a single word that Mr. Azar said that I, I don't fully, fully agree with. Um, and and I, I will reiterate the amazing work and the challenging work that has been done by our staff. Uh, and now we are going to be asking them to do even more potentially uh, through the end of the year, but w- we, we also recognize that this is not a permanent solution.
So Dr. Man, all over the country, as you mentioned, districts are going back. Certainly, people have come up with, with solutions to some of the distracted teaching issues that we're facing, like what, i- i- is it, is it, um, the, our approach, the way the teachers have to approach it? Is there anything that we can adj, any adjustments that we can make to make it, you know, e- e- easier or, you know, more productive, less distracting?
Yeah. I've, um, I've spoke with many superintendents, both locally and, you know, colleagues that I have, uh, through the state. And, uh, this, this approach, uh, no one has cracked the idea of uh, separating this in-person effort and the, the virtual effort. Now, some, uh, I mean, it, it is possible, uh, for, uh, the district to purchase um, online and, online courses from a third-party vendor. Uh, and we have heard anecdotal reports in many instances of real concerns about quality, uh, with respect to, to those offerings. And so, uh, I, I, you know, that is, i- i- if I'd say, look, you absolutely cannot have this teachers teaching two things at once, both in-person and virtual. I think the only immediate solution is to go out in the middle of a quarter and start purchasing vendor-provided uh, curriculum, which, which I think we would be better off maintaining our current hybrid, uh, approach than, than taking that, that step.
And any possibility at all of trying to increase our staffing so that we could do both? I mean, that, it's all, it's really all about personnel.
Yeah, we are, it is. Uh, if you recall, we have our support teachers, our reading support teachers, our instructional support teachers in classrooms. And we've been endeavoring to try to hire people to get them out to backdo their, and we're struggling on that count. And so this, you know, in, in many cases, I'd say, well, we're going to keep staffing. We are actively engaged in trying to find staff to help us, and we can't do it. Uh, it's a, it's a real problem.
Mike, this is Greg. Uh, I know you're looking at March 8th, which is really less than three weeks away. Do you have a plan B or like, you know, because you're still going to try to get information from all the families on what you think they're going to do. But I, I hopefully, I, I, I believe you will do this, will stay flexible and alter that plan as can be over the next couple of weeks. Because, you know, like you, you draw the line in the, you know, saying, I'm, we're going to go five days back to school on March 8th, but there's going to be a lot of hiccups on the way. Do you have a plan B?
Um, Mr. Medenski, if you, if you read the language closely, uh, and we, we learn this in superintendent school, I put down on or about, uh, March 8th. Uh, give myself a little bit of, uh, room in the event that, uh, you know, the concerns you raise, which are very legitimate, uh, come to fruition. So I, I have the escape on or about cause, uh, in, in the motion. But I'm, I'm hopeful that we can do it. If, if we, if we hit snags that we don't see, we'll certainly communicate those to the board and the community and adjust as necessary, but I'm, I'm always hopeful that, that we can get this done and get it done by, you know, in, in a short order, a- and I'm looking at March 8th as being a tight but, but reachable timeline.
I, I did miss that part, but, uh, I also want to reiterate what, what, what Warren said. If it is all possible for us to do it both ways, there's no way we could do it with the staff we have. We would have to see what we could do to get people that teach all virtual, and of course, the individuals that teach in the classroom. There, there's no way around it. We gotta start thinking outside of this box.
Yeah, and, and one of the problems we have is like, for instance, with busing. We're very efficient under normal times with three tiers of busing. But three tiers of busing in a pandemic is not helpful when we're short on drivers. And, and we, over the years, have bumped up our class sizes. And, and that's efficient, but in a pandemic, it comes back to hurt us now. And so, you know, and, and, and we do have, and, and even if, you know, I, I would be saying, if there was a lot of people out there looking for jobs, they say, look, we gotta, we gotta open up here and get some more people, but we can't even do that now, given the, you know, the the jo, the, the job market of people who are interested in, in teaching for us.
Is there anybody who opposes the mo, to having that motion added to the agenda? I think that's our decision at this point. We can, um, have further questions on the motion when, when we make it. Is there anybody who wants, who believes that we should not have it?
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Okay. So, I mean, I think overall, i- it's a good plan. And, and people that have come to the meetings realize that I've been in favor of, uh, in-school instruction in July, September, October, and even today. But we are in the, in the place that we're in, and there's a lot of change that we're proposing in a very short period of time. Uh, to Mr. Azar's point, you know, the, the mode of hybrid instruction is not the best practice. You know, having teachers teach people in person and have people virtual, that's not the best practice, and it, it's just not. And we can't do it. And then with this mode that we're, we're, we're suggesting, it will increase the impact to the teachers. So I agree with Mr. Azar on that. I also agree with Mr. Medenski about how quickly we're trying to do this massive amounts of change, because it's not just the instruction. It's, what I heard was, um, classrooms are going to be potentially from six feet to three. Transportation is an issue with, um, staffing and six to three feet. Um, the, you know, we're, we're putting out a survey to, to, uh, parents, so we don't even know the numbers that we're going to plan for, whether they're virtual or in, in class. You know, it, are we increasing the risk of having all these students come in? Uh, because it will be more, right, than, than hybrid, uh, of shutdowns, right? Now, I, I really want our students in class, and, and I'll, I'll be done in a second here. But mathematically, are we increasing the risk with not increasing the rewards for the time period that we're talking about? Which is, you know, if the motion is March 8th or on or about, is there any advantages to addressing and mitigating some of these risks? Such as staffing, distance, facilities, uh, maintenance, cleaning? Because now we have people in the, in the classroom five days. Um, by doing what we're doing now and buying us extra time over the summer to come back to a more risk averse type approach in, in the fall. All I'm saying is, I, I want our kids back in class. I have a daughter too. She wants to be in class five days a week in, in September, right? Um, but the fact of the matter is, is there any advantages of mitigating risks from now through September? And continuing on the mode that we're in now? Is there any advantages to, um, mitigating risks over the next six months?
You know, Mr. Robson, there surely are. Um, I mean, we're going to be amazingly busy in the coming weeks if this is what the path we go down. And, and, you know, the more time, the, the more thorough we can be, the pressure. So I, I agree that, you know, time would be helpful to us and that if we weren't to return until the fall, then that, it would be certainly easier on us and we could do a better job of it than if we were do, returning in, in early March. The only counter side to the argument that leads me to say, let's do this sooner rather than later, is that, uh, so many of our kids, in my estimation, are in crisis. And they're in crisis right now. And I think, uh, a very serious way to mitigate that crisis is to get those kids back in school with their, with their friends, uh, and allow us to, you know, provide the services that, that we've always provided in, in the way that we have always provided them uh, to kids. And so I, I would say that you are absolutely correct in that time allows for more thoughtful mitigation. But, uh, I, I also think on the other side of the coin is that many of our kids do not have the luxury of time given the crisis in their own lives that they are facing now.
And, and thank you very much, Superintendent Man, but to that point, if we had all, everyone coming back, does that increase the risk of potentially shutting down some of our schools? Because there'll be more, there'll definitely be more contact. That's, that's. All right, do, do the, has anything changed in terms of shutting the schools down?
Um, you know, one of the things that, that I think that, I know that I've said, and I, why I've been so hesitant, uh, is going back to the Mathematica study that showed the different models. And the model of a full return increased the amount of instructional time the kids were physically there, but that was severely diminished by the amount of quarantining that had to take place under that theoretical model. Right? But the emerging literature is saying to us, right? That transmission has not been occurring in schools. All right? And, and, and I am, a- a- and, and now just the literature, you know, we have schools up the street that have been doing it all year. We have counties of schools that are doing it. We have very large school districts down the Philadelphia way that are bringing people back. And, and yes, they have to quarantine and there are issues, and we are totally prepared to shut down schools or send classes home into quarantine as necessary. But all of our observations are saying that the fears we legitimately held early in the year have not come to fruition in the places that are doing a thoughtful return to school as I hope we would be able to accomplish. But, you know, that's not to say in the first week, we're not closing buildings. Right? Because this is a, is very hard to predict. But I think on the totality of the information available, we can do it safely, we can do it well, and there's strong cause to do it because of the, the crisis that our kids are, are currently experiencing.
So I, just so I understand what, what you're saying, so that the, the time that, uh, the three months left in the school year, there are so much more benefits, uh, to students, even with increased risk in certain areas, right? Um, than mitigating the risks between now and the start of September.
And, and again, that's a, that's the key question. It's a central question. And, and again, that's a, that's the key question. It's a central question. And, and it's one that really is not, I, I am comfortable with the recommendation that I made. But I also recognize that that's one person's analysis of some very challenging risks that are hard to, to, to truly quantify, and the interactions between them are very hard to quantify. So this is why I say, you know, this, I have a recommendation I need to be on the record because I owe that to the board. But i- i- people's risk analysis and assessment of this may be very different and legitimately different than mine. And so that's why it's, I think, good for us to be discussing it, and that's why it's a good community decision to make. And, and this board truly does represent the community, and you will speak with that voice as you try to decide on this very challenging issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Acker?
Does it make any sense at all to look at the cutoffs for marking periods for the various schools? And try and coordinate this so that you go five days a week at the start of a new marking period? And perhaps you can roll your start to various schools so that it doesn't put quite as much pressure on the administration?
You know, we, and, and what we've done is we've gotten off the same marking periods, because we're on the trimesters now, if you recall, at the elementary. And I think the trimester is starting not long into March, I think a little bit after. And so, you know, we could do a rolling start. And, and it may be, you know, when we get the survey results back and we, in cha- and we encounter challenges that are, you know, very hard to surmount, then we may, may, may need to get back to the board and say, look, and I would do this for sure, and say, look, March 8th was too optimistic. We need to push this back. We need to make some alternatives. But I, I would like, if the board wants to move in this direction, to set a date and have us shoot for that date. And if we can do it safely and, and do it in a way that, that works well, we'd stick with it. And if we find that there are problems, then we would come back to the board and say, hey, you know, we, we need an extra week, or we want to try this with elementary first, or, you know, whatever the case happens to be based upon the experiences that we have.
I agree. I mean, I, the way I look at it, the only way hybrid is going away is if we hire a lot of new teachers or if we go all virtual. So whether we go four days a week, five days a week, or remain the two days alternating, we're hy- we have hybrid. So we're going to have that hybrid model. Unless we say, well, we're going to go all virtual in order to avoid the, the hybrid model, which I don't think anybody wants to do. So to me, that's really not an issue unless we could hire thirty more teachers to create the all-virtual classroom. So the hybrid is with us whether we like it or not, unless we can hire a lot of new teachers. So I don't see that as an impediment to going back the four or five days. Anybody else? Ms. Cadman, Dr. Cadman?
So back to the original question, which was, do we support adding this recommendation to the agenda? Which I do not, because I will not be voting yes to that recommendation. I won't compromise the six feet of physical distancing in any scenario. You know, we talk about, you know, this whole thing and what, you know, what do we know? We don't know much. We never did know much. But I think that my research and observations and experience has shown me that what we do know is that mitigation strategies work, and those mitigation strategies are six feet of physical distancing, meticulous handwashing, masking, proper mask wearing, you know, clean, cleaning, and, and all of those sorts of things. I did bring up at a past meeting about the fact that I might not have made it clear, but what I thought was that we were sacrificing in-person instruction, you know, for the sake of sports, which the board voted to do, and it was all under the premise that students were suffering and they needed, you know, some physical contact. So we did that. I think that increased our, you know, put many of our students at an even higher risk of contracting the virus. With that, I do want to say that even though people will say there's no spread within the school district, I think that can be attributed to the mitigation efforts and how strict they are, and the dedication and diligence of the students and the faculty to make sure that all those things are done. So we've seen community rates, you know, at really high levels. We've seen community rates drop. You know, we've been privy to, you know, the, the incident rates and the positivity rates. And you're right, the schools have survived, and I contend that it is because of the mitigation strategies. And the other thing is, when we say that there's no in-person spread, you know, among students, I think that it's exactly, especially the high school population, I think that the asymptomatic carriers, you know what I mean, that don't show any symptoms and signs of this virus, but they do indeed carry it and are spreading it and can spread it. Otherwise, you know, we wouldn't have any incidences of, of COVID. But, you know, all of that being said, I, I just think that the mitigation strategies are so vitally important. I think we have come so far, and we are close to the summer. So, you know, I agree with Phil in as much as that seems like an awful lot of, you know, effort and time for something that may prove to be, to put us in a worse situation than we are in now by having to close schools because of, you know, more contact tracing requirements and, you know, more positivity rates. So I, you know, I, unless the six feet can be maintained, and I'm all for back to school as soon as the six feet and all the mitigation strategies. You know, I think that when we made the decision to maintain hybrid, even though back when they were saying, you know, you gotta look at your community rates, and if they're high, you gotta get your kids out of the school. I, you know, I agreed. No, it's, you know, they're safe in the schools. We're doing great things in the school. So let's not give up doing the great things that we're doing in the schools. We've done a great job. So now we're saying, do less of a great job, and we'll just take a chance. I, I won't, I won't ever agree to that. And as far as the mental health of the students, you know, my heart aches. I, I feel terrible about it. My question with that would be, you know, what have we done from a mental health service standpoint? Are guidance counselors reaching out to these students? You know, are they contacting them, calling them? Have they come up with any, you know, out of the box solutions or programs that can be offered to the students? Who identifies them? Can we just have those groups of students work their way back in, you know, more often than the two days, you know, a week? I just am looking for ways around having everybody all back and sacrificing, you know, the effective mitigation strategies that are currently in place, you know, for, you know, for everyone. And I also think that the patient, the students that are in the hybrid model, who wouldn't be comfortable coming back, I think it disadvantages them, and I, you know, think that that wouldn't be fair to the people who agree and believe in the mitigation strategies. And the six, and, you know, the compromise of the six feet would keep them away from school. I don't think it's, do I mean, I don't think that's a fair situation, you know, to put families in, and that's all.
Okay, so anybody else oppose having the motion added to the agenda? Maybe we should move on to the, to the rest of the meeting. We can add that to the agenda, then we would have, obviously, we'll have public comment and further discussion and questions on the motion when we make the motion. I think you're on mute, Dr. May.
Okay, there we, I'm sorry about that. I had to get off the presentation. So shall I, shall I share the agenda, Mrs. Prashowski, or for public comment, shall we?
Yes, where, where are we with the agenda? We have the superintendent. Let's see where we are.
Yes. So we have.
We have to approve the agenda.
We approve the agenda with the addition of the motion that we have a five-day-per-week return to school on authorizing administration to implement a five-day-per-week return to school on or about March 8th, 2021.
And will that be item number Q?
And that, that would be item number Q at the end, yes. Item number Q, a letter Q at the end of the agenda.
Okay.
And so let me, let me share the agenda now. I could share it now with everybody. Okay, hopefully everyone is seeing it.
Yep. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman?
Yes, with the exception of the new addition.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medenski?
Yes.
Mrs. Priscitary?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mrs. Prashowski?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
And can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Shall move.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medenski?
Yes.
Mrs. Priscitary?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Mrs. Prashowski?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Do we have any board reports? Mr. Azar, did you have your first meeting yet at the NEIU?
Next week.
Next week, okay, good. At this time, we will hear from our student representatives. Megan, or, or who's going to go first, Sydney or Megan?
Oh, I'll talk.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
So I'd like to start out by saying that February 1st marked the beginning of the third quarter, which preceded with the start of a new semester, courses at the high school, and the occurrence of virtual parent-teacher conferences in all schools of the district. The high school is in the midst of a successful winter sports season, even with the restrictions being upheld due to the virus. Most events have been streamed on platforms such as YouTube for those who are unable to attend. This Saturday, the 20th, wrestling has individual district championships at the Mohegan Sun Arena. The swim and dive team will be competing in diving districts on February 27th and swimming districts on March 6th. And both the boys and girls' basketball teams have games this week and next week, and will start playoffs in early March. So best of luck to the winter athletes in the upcoming weeks. In an effort to bring the senior class back together, the student government of our senior class hosted a Chase the Chill activity last Friday, the 11th. Students met at the Half Marathon Pavilion in Scranton to hang donated scarves on walkways throughout the community for those in need. Although very different from what we have done in the past, the class is thankful to have the opportunity to come together and provide over hundreds of scarves to the community. We are eager to hear the board's decision when it comes to the changes in the in-person instruction model, and I for one am looking forward to spending more time in the building for the last few months of my senior year. Although we are extremely thankful for the opportunity that hybrid education has provided us, these days often end up becoming virtual anyway due to the weather conditions of the wintertime and COVID-related issues. The district has done a wonderful job keeping the safety of the students in mind as we continue down this path towards an in-person future. But we cannot get there until we take more steps in that direction. As always, I'm grateful for the teachers and the faculty who do so much for the students to make this year as comfortable and worthwhile as possible. So thank you again for your time, and I will now pass the mic to Megan.
Hello, everyone. Hello. To start, as we make our way into the second semester of the school year, many clubs and organizations still continue to function virtually and successful in doing so. Just this past weekend, our marching band was actually able to perform at the Clark Summit Ice Festival and did a wonderful job. Our music and drama department still planned to organize a musical for the late spring of this year. And student council was also able to pass out hot chocolate just last week. Many teams are also preparing for the start of spring sports this season in the upcoming weeks and hope to have a functional and successful season. As the board discuss, discusses the decision whether to have students go back to school full-time, I for one will say, although this decision may make many students anxious, for we have all not been back together for a while, I think that many students will be very appreciative of this decision and would allow for better education and participation in classes. I would love to go back to school fully and be able to see all my classmates and teachers regularly. As a hybrid student, attending these classes in school has been so beneficial to me, and I would most certainly look forward to going to school four to five days a week. Even though it may present as a struggle for many students to come back due to health reasons or safety precaution, administrators and teachers have all been so well with the hybrid model, and I'm so appreciative of their hard work and dedication. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. All right, at this time, we will have our public participation. If anyone wishes to address the board, please raise your hand. You will have three minutes, and please state your name, where you're from, before you speak. So let's see, who is Bobby Klinkel?
Mr. Klinkel, I think, I think you're set. If you could unmute?
Are they there? We could, we could move to the next one until they, if you like.
They're muted.
Uh, yeah, but they might not realize that they're, oh, there we go. Okay.
All right, so we'll go to the next speaker.
Manon Pancholi?
Okay.
Hi, this is actually Manon's mom, Dr. Dippi Pancholi. And I've been an Abington Heights parent for, since 1997. And I would like to speak towards a new extracurricular activity that's been proposed and has been pending for some time. It's called the Help Club. It is able to operate virtually. It offers volunteer hours as well as an opportunity to support orphans in a third world nation. And we've provided the school board with all the possible information about the club, and we would like to request that a decision and a discussion be had so that this club can be approved, so that more students can participate and benefit from this. Because, you know, in this time of virtual everything, and having more extracurricular activities to choose from would definitely help to alleviate some of the stress that these students are having.
Thank you. Dr. May, were you aware, aware of it? I, I think she said it was pending, or is it?
No, I, I think I remember seeing the paper. I think there were a couple of questions. I'll have to find out exactly where we are on it, and I could, I'll give Dr. Pancholi a call with an, with an update.
I'd really appreciate that. Thank you very much, Dr. May.
I'll, I'll, I'll be in touch, hopefully tomorrow, certainly this week.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you. Do we try Bobby Klinkel again to see if they're there now?
Mr. Klinkel, I don't know if you could hear us, but it appears you're muted. Okay.
Okay. Chad Sutton?
Hi, yes, it's Chad Sutton speaking. I've enjoyed, well, my kids have enjoyed being in classrooms ever since, so like 2005. And I think you guys are doing a great job considering how difficult this is with this COVID-19 crisis. And I do appreciate all the, the help and the work that teachers have done. And my daughter took a lag semester from college, and she was participating, helping out in the hybrid classrooms. And she noticed that the teachers, I think, were able to, you know, spend time with the students and devote themselves to the classroom students without ignoring the little camera totally. And didn't really seem distracted by looking at the whiteboard. They seemed to be able to teach fairly well. And she was just helping out in the back of the class with other problems and sometimes helping technically, switching the microphones around and switching the cameras around so the teachers could teach from home. But overall, But overall, I thought that the virtual program was working, and my two boys in middle school are learning from home, and I'm not going to brag about any grades or anything because they're not perfect, but they've been doing very well, learning. And I think that learning from home is a viable option. As a physician, I'm concerned about the second wave of COVID-19 that we've seen all across the country. And yes, the number of new cases per day is diminishing, but we're still in the middle of a large wave of this pandemic, and I hesitate to force students to go back to school when at work I see so many people who are sick from COVID-19. We don't know where they get it from, but I also see children who have had COVID-19 and didn't have any problems to begin with, and then months later come up with other diseases that are unexpected. And unfortunately, we don't know enough about this virus to say that it's safe to go back to school even with six feet distancing and without it. Just because 66 of 67 counties can't abide by that doesn't mean that we should say, okay, let's not either. So I, I think we should still offer virtual learning for students, and I think students are capable of learning that way.
Okay, thank you very much. Dan Lamagna?
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
First, I want to compliment starting off, recognizing Black History Month, being in education. I think we all know there's opportunity to do more and be a part of a solution there, so kudos for opening with that. Also, I noticed in Phil's signature here on the Zoom, he has some gender neutral pronouns. So in the spirit of diversity, equity, and inclusion, I want to compliment Phil there for, for having that. So I'd like to see more of that from the district. As far as wanting the students to return five days, I mean, I think that's the common denominator amongst all of us. That's what we want, that, that's with our, with our goal. But kudos to Ms. Cadman, I think it's not at the price of health and safety. Three feet social distance often vary less in our schools, not just in the classrooms, but issues of cafeteria space, certain sinks not working, transportation. You have 30% of teachers who aren't comfortable, 35% of the community who's not comfortable, and really do believe in that hybrid model that has been working. Now, yeah, I mean, to Dr. Mayhan's efforts, I understand them, but I don't see the rush to get there by March 8th, especially at a time now where, you know, the vaccine hasn't even been widely distributed throughout our community. And when we talk about health and safety, it's, of course, for the students, but also to our teachers and our staff and the community. And I think there's a lot of risk trying to rush this when so many things are not in place. And even the President of the United States now, in his new plan, is calling for still following the six feet social distance guidelines. To Chad Sutton, who just spoke, kudos to him as well there, recognizing how well of a job the teachers are doing. I heard a couple of our student representatives well spoken tonight, speak to, you know, the teachers are engaging our students in this virtual environment. So to flip all that upside down in a month, we only have three months to go and not everything in place seems like a rush. To the concerns of mental health and grades, I definitely understand them, again, working in education. I don't know if there's CARES Act funding that could help support additional help in your guidance department and/or tutoring to help those students that are struggling in those arenas. But there are also, as we said, many students that are absolutely flourishing during this time as well. So I recognize it was a tough decision. As always, I've spoken in past board meetings from a higher education neighbor. I'm glad to help. I'm on a task force with this related as well, but there's a lot more questions than answers right now, and one month seems like a hasty decision. Last note, I think Valley View was able to maybe put more kids back in five days a week. I think it was K through seven, but they spread them out throughout all the buildings. So maybe there's a different solution to get those that do need to be back and utilize the empty space that you do have. Again, I know it's a lot, a lot more complicated than a three-minute conversation here, but just want to voice my opinion, I think one month is too soon. Thank you for your work.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lamagna. Tom Lovell?
Good evening.
Hi, Tom.
Hi, good evening. Thank you ver, it's Tom Lovell, President of the Abington Heights Education Association, Waverly Township. I'd like to begin by thanking the superintendent, those board members that spoke on the behalf of the professional staff, our student representatives, and our community members who are speaking this evening, and for thanking them for recognizing that education, hard work, and sacrifices of our professional staff. I'd also really like to acknowledge and recognize the accomplishments of our many students, as well as their parents during these extraordinary times. Everybody's striving harder than ever to support their children's education and learning. I would say that as the board considers a transition to a more full in-person learning environment, the association would like to raise the following concerns and considerations. I hope somebody's taking notes. As per the CDC, it is worth noting that strictly enforcing physical distancing of at least six feet is essential in communities where the spread is, is substantial. The term, to the greatest extent possible, is more often applied to areas where the rates of community spread are lower. So if later the board can speak to that, I'd be appreciative. Also, as per the CDC, staff with underlying conditions who have Americans with Disabilities Act recognized conditions that could be potentially putting them at higher risk for contracting COVID are certainly worth receiving additional accommodations. And in, in a situation where these members might be placed at higher risk in classrooms that are more densely populated, I'm wondering if the board is willing to consider, to what extent is the district willing to explore rapid testing as an effective and recommended way to partner with contact tracing and self-screening to identify asymptomatic spread within our schools and as a way to partner with other proper mitigation protocols? I'd like to ask if the board will be posting regular safety reports that might include air quality reports and other environmental reports that would be beneficial for the community to be aware of? Since six feet will be unattainable in many circumstances, what is the possibility that installing safety shields, Plexigat Plexiglas shields around student and teacher desks? Would that be a viable option similar to those found in our retail outlets as well as in our own district front offices? Does the school board have an update on their plan to resume in-person school board meetings? And lastly, in addressing a teacher shortage locally at the state level and at the national level, but here at the local level specifically, I'd wonder what the board might consider to incentivize the profession of teaching, and perhaps what does the board attribute to the said shortage in teachers, counselors, nurses, and specialists? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. May, what, what do you attribute the shortage in, in teachers, as Mr. Lovell has asked?
Well, it's, it's hard to know. It, it is systematic, systemic in that many, many, everybody I speak to is having the same, the same difficulty. So, you know, even, even before the pandemic, we saw significant decreases in individuals who are entering the profession. State schools, which are renowned for training our teachers, their enrollments have plummeted. I think there, it's a, it's a very complex question, and whenever the answers, they've all been exacerbated and magnified during, during the pandemic. So I, I, that, that's very broad strokes, Mr. Brashalski, but that's about all I have for you on, on the topic.
Mr. Lovell, I do believe we have a motion on the agenda this evening, aiming to get our, our board meetings back where we would be able to meet physically. The issue wasn't as much as the board meeting physically as it is allowing the public to participate. So we needed a venue that would allow as many members of the public that would like to participate, and under COVID, that was challenging. So I think we're, we're working on that, so. Courtney Dagnan?
Hi, it's Courtney Dagnan from Clark Summit.
Hello.
Hi. Again, thank you, Dr. Mayhan and our board for listening to me tonight and for sending the survey out to parents. I wasn't going to speak again tonight as I felt I was able to convey my thoughts and my survey, but then I came across some new information that I felt needed to be heard by all of you, and I had questions that I wanted to hear answers to that have come up since our last meeting. First, the new information I have heard. So as I believe Mr. Lovell or Mr. Lamagna, Lamagna said, last night, our President of the United States spoke at a town hall and was asked questions by members and spoke about children returning to school, and he did state that he had hoped for schools to begin to return by the end of April, and even then, we should still remain socially distant, the six feet of social distancing, and mask up. And I'm proud that we are already doing what most are working toward. We are ahead of the game. Today, the CDC released information that states, and I quote, "New variants of the virus that causes COVID-19 could reverse recent decreases in cases and worsen the pandemic." And they go on to state, "We can all limit the impact of these variants by taking proven prevention steps." And these are the steps that they listed, and I'll just add a few comments after each of them. Wear well tight-fitting masks, and Mrs. Brashalski, I believe, mentioned that we are all wearing masks, and we are. My student, you know, my son and my daughter go to school with their mask on on Monday and Tuesdays. But I would ask, like, is that something that should be monitored at schools? You know, because sometimes I see on the video, then they're below children's noses and things like that, or they'll, they'll be pulled down. Stay at least six feet away from people you don't live with was another recommendation. And of course, we know our children would only have, in some cases, one and a half feet between desks, because that three feet, I was told, is from nose to nose. So in between the desks would only be a foot and a half, which I feel is really tight fitting, and in classes that I know that would be the case. To postpone travel, which we know some people can't help but do that, and they are quarantining when they get back, I hope. Avoid crowds in poorly ventilated spaces. The classrooms our children are in, especially at the middle school, are tiny and cramped and have shared walls because it was built in the 70s. And again, that one and a half feet between a desk is just scary to me, and those tight hallways. The other recommendation was to wash your hands often, and we know it'll feel cramped and not efficient for students to wash their hands before snack and recess, to have like all of the kids going to wash their hands when only like one sink is available. So that would need to be addressed. In response to going back to virtual if needed due to an outbreak, I would hope it would not be at the cost of a life. I think that's what I'm most afraid of, for us to reverse back to virtual or hybrid. You know, what, what are we doing this at the cost of? Mr. Azar had mentioned students being only virtual or in-person at the elementary level. And while he mentioned that, I had to just take a note on this. If you move forward with this decision, I want you to think about this for a minute. With virtual instruction at the elementary school, since teachers are not teaching virtual and in-person anymore, what happens to the students that have to quarantine for 14 days or more due to exposure or travel? Do they not receive instruction, like as if they had to take a sick day? Or what if, like, half the class is in quarantine? Does that teacher then jump back on her computer or his computer to teach? I'm just curious about that. With the guidance from the CDC, I just, I'm begging you not to change how in-person instruction is taking place. I want to thank you for asking our parents and teachers to provide insight into your decision, but I have to wonder how other stakeholders in our community, such as grandparents and our neighbors, would respond if we asked the same questions. I've heard the response, we will need to reduce social distancing because it only says to socially distant when possible, like in some of the guidance. But right now, students are in school with our current model, with computers and internet, and it is possible for our students to learn at homes on days they cannot be in school. It is possible to keep our current model in place since we are all fortunate enough in Abington Heights to live in a, a district that has the resources needed to be home and still learning. I do hope you decide to postpone your decision of having students return to four-day or five-day instruction until our community members have had a chance to be vaccinated. It's safer for our students and community. Before deciding to return, please present our community with your updated safety plan, parents mostly. Don't decide to bring them back and then figure it out, which I feel like that's what we're doing tonight. I passed a sign, and I have to, I had a chuckle this morning as I passed a sign on my way to my office, if you will. The sign shows that we can be respectful if we social distance from others. We are responsible if we have six feet between us and others, and I do not believe that we're ready to go back yet. The line my son learned over, the line my son learned over and over at CSE was be a star, comet's are respectful, responsible, and ready, and I believe in it strongly. My children and I do not prefer hybrid or virtual instruction. They want to be back. I want to see them back, but their physical health and the health of my husband come first. Please show us you are ready prior to deciding on this extremely important decision. Our children, staff, and community members' lives are literally in your hands. Mr. Robson said it best, is it worth the risk? Bring the kids back that need to come back as you have them. Thank you for doing that, and reach out to those struggling. Keep the rest of them safe. Our district is not the same size or built as other schools around us. I've looked at it. The guidance is there. Please, please, please follow it. There are so many issues that I see if students do return. I, as a parent, would want to know those answers to those questions before the decision is made. I was not able to say I would or would not want my child in school or my children in school with complete certainty because these questions and many others were not answered before that survey. So I hear you talking about a lot of great things, but, you know, I have more here, but I ultimately, I just feel like we need more information, and I, I trust my district, of course, that they will come up with answers, but please present that to the parents before you ask us to make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Philip Horahan?
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So my name is Philip Horahan. I live in Clark Somus. I have two daughters in South Abington Elementary in kindergarten and third grade. I, I'd like to start quickly by echoing what Mr. Azar said, lauding the T-shirts efforts. I'd like to thank the admin staff for everything they've been doing, but I, I, I could not say enough about how amazing the teachers for my two daughters have been. They have been doing everyone here proud, and I suspect a lot of people have the same to say about their teachers. That said, moving on, there were nine resource links presented on Mr. Mayhan's final slide. And there's a, there's a, and he mentioned that they present both sides of, of an issue, which is a complicated issue with voices on both sides. I, I think we should be explicit about, because I asked in a previous meeting where we're getting guidance, and I was pointed to the PA State Department of Health website. So I think it's worth being explicit about what is there. At the moment, that reports 163 cases per 100,000 of the population, and up from 143 in the previous seven-day window. The threshold for substantial spread is 100. So we're well over, and has been for weeks, well over the threshold for substantial spread. We are dropping, thank goodness, and although if you look at the graphs, it looks very much like we're dropping because we're climbing down from a large surge that happened in Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year. So we're getting back to, we haven't got there yet, but we're getting back to where we were at the start of November and October. So we're designated as substantial spread in Lackawanna County. The PA guidelines from, from the Department of Health say that in that amount of spread, the appropriate model or the suggested model for is, is hybrid for the elementary school, and which they explicitly say includes six feet distancing. So the recommendation from the state in our circumstance is that instruction, in-person instruction should be kept to six feet, and that virtual instruction should be done outside the elementary level in order to enable that. So I think we should be clear about what the state guidance is, acknowledging that there is other guidance there or other discussion in, in the community and in, not just the local community, but, but wider than that. I would mention that one of the things that was mentioned earlier was the Mathematica Theoretical Study, which was referenced a while ago, and which talks about smaller peer groups in the hybrid study, which, but also talks about, it, it mentions there's a longer distance if you have two days in and then three days virtual, there's a longer period of time between your visits to school when symptoms will show in When symptoms will show in the people you've been in close contact with. So moving to five days instruction increases the size of your peer group and decreases the window of time. That you can show symptoms or be aware of, of, of close contact. So which is quite a much more risky move. So I would ask you, if you're going to make a decision to move towards hybrid instruction. One, and, and which I, I would love to see like everybody here. I have two daughters, if I ask them, would they like a puppy or go back to school, they would have to think hard about it. But the, the, the guidelines appear to be fairly clear. So what I would ask. Have the board, if they're going to vote on this motion, had time to consume. The links that Dr. Mahin has provided, where they provided to you earlier, and have you had time to read them and consider them? And if not, what information is being used to make that discussion? I assume it's more than just Dr. Mayan's presentation at the moment, which was limited in time, obviously. So there we go. I've used a little more than three minutes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Karis Mayer.
Good evening.
Hello.
Uh, my name is Karis Neer from Clark Summit, Pennsylvania. My husband and I have a daughter at the middle school. First of all, I want to thank the teachers for their extraordinary efforts this year, both to educate and engage our students. They have gone above and beyond the call of duty to teach our children, to work with them. And so I really have to say thank you to them for all that they have done and all that they continue to do. Second, I would like to ask the board tonight to consider. Remaining with the current hybrid model of education. And I really have to thank, uh, Dr. Cadman for what she said tonight about the importance of the mitigation efforts of. Physical distancing. Um, because the current model of, of. The current hybrid model allows for physical distancing in the majority of our classrooms. This option gives the best opportunity to reach our students and still provide for their safety. Our teachers' safety and the safety of our families and therefore our community. I understand the desire to have our students back in the classroom. I want my daughter to be back in the classroom as much as possible. But I believe that when we do so, we have to do so safely. And I believe that for right now. The safest option is the two day a week hybrid model. Um, violating the social distance, the physical distance mitigation effort for extended, extended periods of time. Is going to put our students at additional risk. It's going to put them at additional risks of quarantines and that places our families in jeopardy. And it also puts our families in a position where they have to make some very, very serious decisions. Because it makes them place, make decisions about how their lives could possibly disrupted. Particularly when they have to deal with jobs that may. Be impacted or when they're talking about. Risks to their families, their family's health, or the responsibilities that they're. They may have in taking care of other members of their family. Remaining in the current hybrid model also allows our schools the flexibility. To invite students who need more attention, who need more in-person time. Into those classrooms because there is more space in the classrooms. So from my perspective and from the way I've been looking at things, the hybrid model that we currently have is the safest, most flexible. Option, and it works for the greatest number of teachers and families. So I would urge the board to stay with that. Until we can answer more of these questions and then we can look into more of the different options that we can possibly look into. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Julie, whoops. Julie Avasado.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Dr. Mayan and Board of Directors. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Julie Avasado and I live in Ransom Township. I have two children in the district, one in middle school and one in high school. I have watched and followed all the school board meetings. I was very happy with the careful planning from virtual to hybrid. It was well thought out and safe for all involved. I am concerned that the district is considering to reopen school for four to or five days a week. I understand that people are looking for normal and returning to school 100% in person is the ultimate goal and best for all. However, we must not forget that we are still in a pandemic. With new variants that are more transmissible and more deadly. There is nothing normal about COVID. I applaud the district that made it a priority. I'm getting your faculty and staff the vaccine. So that they are protected from getting COVID. The children, however, cannot get the vaccine at the present time and still can get COVID. Can spread the virus and get very sick and even die. Opening a school four or five days puts our families and the community at risk. We cannot afford to relax the mitigation or safety measures at this time. Opening four or five days increases class sizes, reduces social distancing. Multiplies, multiplies the exposure rate among students and staff. Which increases quarantine and isolations for families and students. More students in closed quarters mean cleaning and sanitizing areas will also be needed to increase. In high traffic areas and areas that are touched frequently. Are more maintenance staff being hired to stop the spread of germs? Replace soap and hand sanitizers, wipe down, wipe down handrails, light switches, tables, desks more frequently? What about masks? Is the district going to enforce the wearing of two masks recently suggested by the CDC? Is the district supplying proper PPE and masks to staff and students? What about ventilation? Do all the windows open in the classrooms? How often are the HVAC filters changed and air quality checked? How will contact tracing be managed when more students are in the classrooms, hallways? And are in the buses, are on the buses now? Let us not lose sight that we are in a pandemic with more transmissible variants of COVID circulating. Let us not set a false standard that we are safe. And it is safe for large crowds of people or students to be together. I want my kids to be in school, but in hybrid at this time. I do not feel safe having them in school four or five days. With a lot of people in not socially distanced from each other six feet or more. Anyone who has been affected by COVID knows the virus does not discriminate. And you will never know how mild or severe the symptoms you or your loved ones will have. So I ask you to vote to stay hybrid and keep our students, families, faculty and community safe. We are still in the first phase of vaccinations and there are more people without their vaccinations than there are with it. Safety should be our utmost priority at this time. Thank you for your time and I would like to thank all the teachers for doing an amazing job. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Uh, 15709.
Hi, my name is Miranda Madden. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, hi, I am a parent of a student that is in the district. Um, we did go. Uh, obviously first it was all virtual at the end of the school year and then, um, we did try the hybrid model. Um, but with, with, um, cases increasing, I did pull him out. However, he is going back to school tomorrow. And I know all of you have our children's best interest at hand, but we also need to recognize. Students whose parents aren't doing this with them. Or how many kids are actually being left behind? Because I, what I see and hear is a bunch of. Teachers and well-professioned people, um, you know, just. It's, it's really difficult to, to describe what I've seen in the children. Um, I have nieces in the, in the middle school, in the elementary school, I have my son. Um, I know people who have kids failing in middle school, whose parents are teachers. Um, I know personally, um, a child that has been removed from the district when everything changed and is now so behind. That they can barely read or write. Um, we need to think about those children and I think that's what Dr. Mahon is talking about with the mental health and with the risk. Um, of bringing the kids back, that their mental health is, it's, it's vitally important. Um, my son is excelling with, with the all virtual and he excelled with the hybrid. However, I, I am seeing. Students that aren't, and I'm not hearing enough about the students tonight. I'm hearing about. Family members, I'm hearing about teachers, I'm hearing about. Staff and all this other stuff. I understand the fear with COVID. But at some point, this isn't going away and the kids can't get vaccinated. So at what point are we going to bring them back to school? At what point? Um, you know, I, as many of us do, chose to live in this district. I went to Abington my whole life. And I had a great education. It was the best thing that could have ever happened to me growing up in a home that I grew up in. And some of these children are not fortunate to grow up in great homes and they don't have parents that are. On them about their homework and about their learning and they've disappeared off the face of. The earth. I mean, how do you even get guidance counselors to call families that you can't even get in touch with? Um, it's just, it's, it's very sad to see and I'm seeing. Uh, you know, a, a student that was with my son in kindergarten has now reverted back to almost preschool. Where they don't know their sight words, they can't read or write, and that is very detrimental in times like. When they're going. It's the foundation of their learning where we, like, I can't express enough how important it is. For them to be learning in school and. I know that COVID is very serious, but we're going on a year now. And the problem is, is we don't know enough because nobody's telling us enough. I mean, he's, Dr. Mahon put. All different, uh, links for different theories about. COVID, everybody has their own opinion and I'm sorry, but if you are not ready. To send your kid back to school full time, then you have the option to do all virtual. And what I'm, what I need the school district to do is to work for our children. Not for grandma and grandpa, not for people with pre-existing conditions. I understand because my mother has been in quarantine for a full year. She has not seen her grandchildren. But that is what is going to have to happen. I'm sorry, it's not the children who should suffer. How are we going to decide? Who moves forward next year and who stays back? How are we going to decide? How are we going to make assessments? When they move on to the next grade and they, they aren't able to do that material? How are we going to, I know personally, my sister lives in Houston, Texas, and they are all back to school full time. And when there's an issue with one of the schools, they have to quarantine and that's just part of it, but they are thriving. And they are seeing, um. Tremendous results with bringing the students back and very little transmission rates. I had my son involved in. Sports this whole year. I have my daughter who's young involved in sports. And we have, we have been lucky enough to, I mean, maybe we could be carriers or whatever, but that, what I'm saying is, is. You risk it anytime you go to the grocery store. You're risking it anytime you go out with your child. You're risking it. Anywhere and the place that we need to be focusing on the most is the school. And all I'm hearing is the school district saying that they can't provide our children with what they need. So I would like to know how many children have dropped off the face of the earth? How many children are failing their classes? Because I know personally of at least two of them. And it's, it's, it's three, three of them and it's just sad and I just want to know what. And when do we decide when it's time to go back?
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, you're, you're beyond your three minutes. I appreciate your passion. I. Can, can you just wrap it up real quick or?
No, go ahead. It's, that was, that was it.
No, okay, thank you very much. I, I appreciate it. I hate, hate to interrupt, but we have to be fair. Um, three minutes is our, is our time limit. Okay? Um, Sarah Dogger.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, um, my name is Sarah Dogger. I have three kids in the district. Um, at Clark Summit Elementary and two at the middle school. Um, I want to also thank the board and Dr. Man and all the school professionals for everything you've done. Um, and all the thought you put behind this and Dr. Man, thank you for starting out the meeting recognizing Black History Month. Um, I think it's really important, um, and that's something that I would love to see. Um, folded into all of our academics all year long and not just during the month of February. But that is aside, um, right now though, um, I just want to. Put out there, I am someone who put on the survey that I would. Want to stay hybrid due to lots of things that have already been mentioned and, um, waiting until there's more vaccines. Um, the social distancing, the new variants, all of that. Um, if we do go back to school four to five days a week, um, a couple of things I'd like to note is that. Um, you mentioned some things that have come up in the survey, social issues, academics and mental health. Um, none of these things are magically being, um, cured when students enter the building. It's not like glitter falls when they enter the doors of the building and they're magically all caught up to speed on all of these things. Um, we might need to think outside of the box a little bit. Um, for academics, there are some students who are excelling, but those that are falling behind, how do we get them back up to speed? Um, so that they can complete the year, um, where they need to be so that once they re-enter the school building and they're with more peers. They're not totally frustrated because they're not getting material that other kids are. Um, so how are you going to address that tutoring, after-school sessions? How do we get kids back up to speed? Um, with mental health. Um, all of us, all of you on this call, myself included, we've all been in crisis for the last year. How do we address that with the students? Just walking in the doors of the school is not going to fix their mental health if they're suffering. And so how do we invest in mental health? Are there more counselors? Are there more social workers? How do we actively address those issues? Um, additionally socially. They're all masked, they're all distanced when they're in school, the social opportunities. While they might see some of their friends, I have two kids who don't have a single friend in their class because their friends are all on the other team. They're not, it's not going to help them being back in school socially. So how can we increase some social opportunities for students? Maybe reinstate some of the after-school clubs, things like that. Um, and I'm going fast, um, here. Also, if more students are going to end up. Dr. Man, if I understood what you were saying, that the number of students who indicated or that their. Parents who indicated that their students might be going virtual actually increases the number of students who are virtual. So how do we address their mental health, their academics and their social situation? Because all of our students are, um, equally important. And my last point is that, um, just in terms of our school professionals. What they've been doing is heroic, but they're not superhero heroes, they're humans. And so we need to also be addressing their, um, trauma and crisis that they're living with and really supporting them in whatever they need. Um, to continue to make this year successful for them because all of our students going back into the building. Without our teachers being well in whole, um, and comfortable. They can't do their job as best as they can and we have amazing teachers and school support staff in our building. Um, and I don't know if that means incentives like someone else said, um, for substitutes. Um. Increases in pay for counselors and teachers, whatever it might be, we might need to think outside of the box here. Thank you. I think my three minutes.
Yes, thank you very much. Erin Bishop.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. This is Erin Bishop and I'm in Clark Summit. Um, I want to reiterate what everybody else has said, the teachers are doing a phenomenal job. You know, the only experience I have is with the elementary teachers and both of my son's elementary teachers are doing great. So anything to do with. Um, my desire to get them back in school and not in hybrid or in virtual learning has nothing to do with what the teachers are doing. Um, and I want to thank, I believe it was Mrs. Madden. I believe that she and I may be one of the few that are speaking for what I believe is the majority. Um, in regard to the survey of the parents who want their students back in school. I don't feel, um, that we've been rushing into anything. It's been a year. Um, we have taken very slow steps. We were at home, um, through the end of last year, we started virtual, we'd done the hybrid. Um, and I have written to the board in the past, including this week. And you know how I feel about returning our children to school full time? Even though I do have a child that is higher risk for greater complications if he contracts COVID. But that's true for any virus that he or bacteria that he, um, that he contracts. So, um. This is speaking from a parent who has a child that is in such a situation. Mr. Robson asked about advantages of waiting until fall and not doing anything right now. I feel strongly that any day we delay getting the students back will cause us to continue, excuse me. Continue to lose more students to disengagement. Our son started off the year fine with hybrid, but as we move along, we see the detriment that is happening with our second grader. Many districts around us have been in full person since the beginning of the school year. And I have heard of several districts at least sending their elementary students back within the next couple of weeks. Dr. Mahan used the word crisis. That is what we are living with, with our children. And many children that we don't even know of through the district. You've done the assessments for the high schoolers, you've seen how their grades are below 50%. But we are only in one grading. But we are only in one grading period for the elementary students. We haven't even hit the second one yet. What detriment will we see from the first to the second? And how long are we gonna wait until we see that before we do something and act? Um, we can't continue to follow the process of what if and fear. Dr. Cadman said it would be a disservice to those who have to go back to hybrid. If they're, I'm sorry, go back from hybrid to full virtual if we vote for this change. If I'm not mistaken, that is a smaller number of students than those who wish to move into full person versus that versus from that model that would revert to virtual. I hope that made sense. I typed this really fast while we were talking. That is suggesting the sacrifice of the greater population for a few. I strongly urge the board to vote yes. The parents have told you what they want, even if it is less than six feet apart. We know what is right for our children and want the choice to send them in person. Please listen to the parents and please vote yes. Please take into consideration, as Mrs. Madden said, there are so many children who have parents like ours do that get to sit next to them, which I'm having to do now to keep my child engaged in his class. But there are so many children who do not. And you don't know all of those children. I don't feel that all of those children have been addressed. And all of the children, um, just that are suffering. And are we going to continue to allow the children to suffer? For the greater of the what ifs and the fear that could be out there. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you. Jill Newton?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Mann, um, the rest of the school board. I appreciate this opportunity. Um, again, my name's Jill Newton. We have three children in the school district, two at the high school, one at the middle school. Um, I personally had the extraordinary opportunity last year. I was a, pretty much a full-time substitute teacher at the middle school as the building floater. So I had an unbelievable opportunity to work alongside our gifted teachers and support them. And I can say I have intimate knowledge of the challenges that they face in the classrooms and do thank them as well for rising to this challenge with this hybrid model this year. Um, my husband and I are fully supportive of the kids going back to school full time. Um, and again, because of my knowledge of even the middle school, the size of the classrooms, how the students move around the building, I can say I'm very comfortable with the idea of bringing all the students back. I think it can be done safely, thoughtfully. Um, one of the things that I think, I have many questions, but one of the ones that kind of stuck out this past week was really with the survey that was sent out last week. It's unclear to me what the four-day option was. You keep saying four-day or five-day. And I don't know what four-day means. I'm not really sure if that was explained very well. Is that, that Wednesday will still be a virtual day for the kids and all the kids go to school on Monday, Tuesday and Thursday, Friday? Or was it still keeping an A and B team where the A-team is there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday? And B is there Tuesday through Friday, giving Monday and Friday just half as many kids in the building? Um, so if you can explain a little bit more of what that means and why that's even being thrown around out there, I think that would be really helpful. So again, that's it. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a great question. Dr. Mann, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, sure.
Standing on that?
Yes, um, and thank you for the question. Uh, the four-day, the five-day per week, obviously, students would be in each of the five days per week. The four-day option would be that all students would be in on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And all students would have a virtual day on Wednesday. So both are variations of a full return. Uh, the four-day per week is just one day, the Wednesday, that would remain all virtual for all students.
Okay, thank you. Um, Stephanie Luciani?
Good evening, everyone. This is Stephanie, South Abington Township. Um, thank you, Dr. Mann, for the presentation, taking the time to put all of the information together. Um, as you very clearly stated, it's easy to find information to support any point of view at this point, um, whatever, whatever your personal point of view may be. But what is not up for debate is that our world, our businesses are moving forward. Most of us are working. Um, hospitals are open, restaurants are open, grocery stores are open, and it's really time that we get the schools back to where they need to be. It is overall very frustrating that we're discussing this in February of 2021 instead of June of 2020. Um, I feel like if we would have done this back in the summer months, we would have had better time to prepare and have those full virtual versus full in-person classes, which is obviously what needs to be done for our teachers and our students' sake. Um, the conversation tonight, the public speaking feels very one-sided yet again, as it did the very first night that I spoke up on one of these meetings. But the data is very clear from the parents in the district. It's not one-sided. We've gotten off-topic and it's frustrating that we are going in circles around the fact that the data collected from the parents of the district clearly shows that we need to be returning. Um, it's frustrating that our teachers were not brought into the conversation earlier in the process so that they could have provided, um, you know, ways of getting the kids back in the classroom so that their concerns could have been addressed upfront very early on. Um, but what has, what I encourage all the board members to do tonight is to follow the data that's collected. It's why we're here. It's why there's 500 people viewing this meeting. Um, many of the parents you surveyed, keep in mind, are also teachers. Keep in mind that many of those teachers are in a classroom five days and trying to manage their children's education when they're only attending school two days. Put yourself in their shoes. Put yourself in the shoes of those of us who feel that our children's educational needs are clearly not being met regardless of these teachers putting so much of their time and their heart and their soul into it, um, which they're, they're amazing. They are. Um, those of us who are asking for a full return have never taken away the option or never said there was a need to take away the fully virtual option. It's very impressive that Abington has gone to the lengths that they have to have that option available for parents. But we've never said to those parents that that shouldn't matter because we all believe that we should have an option that works best for us. So I just encourage you all tonight, um, to, to vote based on the information provided by the people who elected you to your position. Um, and their parents listening tonight who are trying to determine whether or not they're gonna stay in our district next year. There's, there's people right now looking at private schools and there's people who are on this meeting who have their children in private schools. They're up for re-enrollment for next year and they have to make a decision. So this is, this is a really big night, um, for everyone involved. And if we can't meet the March 8th deadline, I think all of us could understand that, but let's start the process and work towards getting ready. Um, you know, if it takes an extra couple of days, I, I, I think we would all be very understanding of that to make sure that it's done the right way, but let's vote to get them back in and start making the changes that we need to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Anthony Abdallah? Did I do Abdallah?
Yeah, Abdallah. That's right.
Okay.
Perfect. Hi, it's Anthony Abdallah, South Abington Township. I have three children, two graduated already, Jack and Luke. And my daughter Lucy is a junior at the high school. I just have a quick question. We keep saying that we're trying to hire people. And are these contracted positions? Are you doing per diem? Because if they're, I can't imagine, we can't hire a contracted position. I could get you 10 teachers tomorrow who would sign a contract and work for you. But if they're per diem, they're gonna stay on unemployment. They'll make more money that way. So I would imagine if we really wanted to hire teachers, we can hire teachers. And just like the custodial staff, last year I volunteered with Coach DiSarno in the, um, middle school to coach the basketball team. The middle school is filthy. Because we have third-party janitors. When we had janitors who worked for the school, they took pride in the school. The kids loved the janitors. The kids cleaned up for the janitors. Now it's just like, I don't know, it, there's not that sense of community with the people cleaning the schools. If we can get better people to clean the schools, is there a plan? Is there a, a maintenance plan? Like, we're gonna clean the schools this many days. They have to check off stuff. Or is it just, yeah, they clean the schools and everything's fine. I just, you know, I think we need to hire janitors again that work for us and get rid of a third party. And just, if you could just answer the question, please, are we trying to get per diem teachers? Are we trying to offer contracts? That's it. I appreciate everything you guys are doing for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Mann, Metro, for hiring per diem teachers or not?
We've, we've, we try, we're trying to get both unsuccessfully. Um, the per diem teachers day-to-day subs, we know that's a problem, but uh, our long-term subs, uh, which we hired many the last time, uh, they start on step one, receive full benefits and we're just hired a, a few, um, a few professional people with long-term commitment. And anyone who would like to send me a list of 10 people who want to come to work here, I'd be very excited to receive it, Mr. Abdallah. Happy to, happy to take it, kindly send it along.
Catherine Buckley?
Hi, thank you. Um, my name is Catherine Buckley. I am the secretary in the high school guidance department and have held this position for the past year and a half. I am also a graduate student pursuing my degree in school counseling. I'm currently in my internship and have been running a stress group with Cindy Copley at the high school. I can assure that the counselors I have been working with have been doing as much, such a fantastic job with adjusting to the times and doing as much as they can to reach out and encourage students to participate in groups in order to address the social and emotional domain of student development and promote, promote wellness. It has been a challenge, but a challenge that they are all taking head-on and not lightly. I would also like to acknowledge the great effort to all of our professional staff and teachers who have shown an amazing ability to adjust, adapt and modeling a deep resiliency for our students. Now, my concern as the secretary in the guidance department at the high school is ensuring everything moves smoothly for our seniors. We are coming up on the end of the school year, which is the most demanding part of this position. And I can assure you, last year around this time, it felt like baptism by fire. Um, we, I am currently working on mid-year reports to ensure the seniors have the up-to-date GPAs needed to be provided to the schools in which they applied, which is crucial to the admissions process for the students and how the schools determine admissions. I have also started on the reflection program, which deals with the local scholarships that are available to our seniors. With this, um, reflections information, I provide the information and the resources to the seniors. I have already been quarantined due to being in close contact with people who have tested positive within the district. Not only is this a financial hardship on me because I, I am not a district employee, so I don't get paid for the timeout. But the most important thing, and what gets me anxious and nervous, is that if I have to quarantine again, it impedes the process of the mid-year reports, the scholarship information, the finalization of their transcripts and making sure that they're getting sent to the highest, to, to the colleges in which they applied. Um, I just found out through this board meeting that increasing the student capacity is also abandoning the recommended six feet of social distancing that can inadvertently hinder the final year processes for the senior class by putting clerical staff at a higher risk for exposure. Um, and that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. R. Davis?
Yes, thank you. Uh, good evening. Rebecca Davis here from Clark Summit. I have a child. I have, uh, four children in the district. One in Clark Summit Elementary, one in the middle school and two rising seniors. I would like to thank the board and the teachers, uh, for the excellent job and difficult decisions that you have been making and still have to make. Um, I always seem to be on the opposing side of the naysayers who attend. I, I can truly tell you how much I appreciate that we're looking into returning to school to a somewhat normal schedule of four or five days and I completely support it. Since, um, I see the impact firsthand on all of my kids. I really, I applaud those children who are excelling in school, but unfortunately, my children among them. I keep thinking back to the slides that Dr. Mann presented in the beginning stating that above 50% of the parents who responded also favor more person, more in-person learning. And I'm just gonna echo, I believe it was Erin and Stephanie, but I also don't feel that we're rushing into a full return. And anyone who is fearful of sending their children or simple child, this, to the school are perfectly fine keeping them in virtual environment. That's the beauty of a decision. It's ours to make and nobody gets to judge you on it. That's really all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Melissa Spear?
Hi, good evening. This is actually her husband, Aramis Spear. Um, I would just like to, uh, first of all, thank all of you for being here tonight. Uh, thank the teachers. Uh, of course, they've done an excellent job. Um, we all know what they're best at and, and most comfortable at is in-person instruction though. Um, I'd also like to thank, uh, Mr. Mahan for his presentation and for recognizing, uh, importance for returning to in-person instruction. Um, also echoing Miranda and, and Stephanie. Um, detriment to all of our students is on the parent. But decline in children, especially eight through eight is, it, it's devastating. It's sad. Um, it's, uh, frustrating and it's angering. Um, it, it's quite easy if your children are grown to say we need to, uh, drag our feet with the brakes here. Uh, but one thing we definitely haven't done is rush into anything. Any of the same questions that have been raised even tonight are the same questions we raised back in June. Um, in response to, uh, Dr. Cadman's research, I'd like to point to the large-scale COVID studies, uh, by Duke University and the CDC, which both concluded at the very worst. Uh, school transmission is highly unlikely to exceed community spread. Uh, particularly the Duke University study, which I think it was 90,000 students and faculty across dozens of districts, uh, where they fully expected it to exceed. Um, as many as you, uh, as many of you have pointed out, uh, adherence to the mask-wearing has been, uh, be good. Um, well, that, that's, that's helped gain the spread, obviously. Um, I'm not sure if we're wearing masks if it's slightly under six feet that we need to, uh, throw our hands up and, uh, quit here. Um, as far as, you know, grandparents, i- i- it's not about the grandparents. And, and I'm glad many of the parents pointed it out that it's about the kids. It's not about the teachers. It's not about anybody else. It's about the kids. They're suffering. They need to go back to school. There's clearly evidence they can go back to school safely. There's also evidence that the children are listening and following guidelines. Um, at the same time, there's no reason recently-retired grandparents should be sitting there teaching their grandchildren how to, uh, write, add, you know, math and all sorts of things. Um, I think, uh, I think we need to get kids back five days a week. I appreciate your time. Uh, have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the names jump. Did I miss Jill Newton or did Jill Newton speak?
I know Mrs. Newton spoke.
Okay, I thought so. So now we're on Jennifer.
Right.
Back in or back in?
Um, you know, I'm, I'm getting a message, "A lot of talk is not available" uh, because the individual's using an older version of Zoom.
Oh.
Um, so maybe, maybe we could promote to panelists. Let me see if this, if this, if this would work here.
Okay.
Jennifer, are you with us?
Hi, yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Um, I have, my name is Jennifer Bates in Brighton. You guys, I've spoken several times to the board. You know that I am the biggest supportive of our teachers and, um, I can't say enough for Mrs. Sanders and Ms. Leah at the middle school. You know how I feel about them. I do have a couple concerns. One is why are we jumping straight to five days? Why wouldn't we go to four days? It's key to containing the spread of this virus for cleaning purposes. So why would we not keep Wednesday as our virtual day? So the total buildings can get a deep clean. Number two, have our teachers gotten their second shot? If we, if the teachers have not gotten their second shot, they are not fully protected yet, and they wouldn't be fully vaccinated until at least two weeks after getting their second shot. Third, what happens if our teachers choose not to return to the school district? As we've seen throughout the United States, several school districts, our teachers, the teachers have decided not to return and to continue teaching virtually. What are we prepared to do if our teachers, because it does seem that the majority of our teachers would prefer us to stay in a hybrid model? I am lucky enough where one of my children, he is excelling at virtual. He's completely virtual. While I had another one who fell behind and he's now in school four days a week and he is now, thankfully, his grades are coming back up. And he is doing amazing. Thank you to my middle school support. I really do appreciate it. But I think it is all about the students, but what I think some parents are also forgetting, they're like, why are we talking about our grandparents? Well, maybe because the grandparents are in our homes and they are our support system. So I would be able to go back to work and my children are supported. And if they catch COVID because of exposure through the school, while we know that it is harder to do, or it's been shown that way. If we did lose a grandparent in the community because of the spread through being in school and that was how, that was their support system, the family support system, then I don't think that's responsible either. Thank you very much for listening. And again, I know this is a very hard decision for you, but I hope you look, I would hope maybe you would consider having our elementary schools back full-time before you mitigate the, the middle school and the high school. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you. Julie Mann Warren?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Julie Mann Warren from South Abington Township. Two students in the high school. I've spoken before, but I really wanted to speak up tonight. I was really discouraged to hear so many parents talk about the fears and risks. Obviously, there are things that we all know are there. We watched this happen over the last year. What I don't understand is that these parents that spoke up aren't understanding they have an option and they've always had an option. So if, if there's fear, if they're concerned, one woman just said, you know, about grandparents being in the home and then she wouldn't be able to go back to work, then there is that option to keep her kids at home and protect that grandparent. That's not the school's job to worry about public health. If you look on the Department of Education website, by, from what I understand, they govern public schools in our country. The purpose is to ensure that every learner has access to a world-class education that academically prepares children and adults to succeed as productive citizens. I don't feel that we are doing it to the, well, to the way that we used to. Abington Heights is an award-winning district. And so we have that potential now as we have seen COVID rates drop. We have seen things happen. I agree with Stephanie and Jeremy. We are not rushing into anything. This has been a year long. Overwhelmingly in the survey, we had parents, I believe when I looked at it quickly on that one slide, we have over 64% of your families that would vote for a return for four or five days of in-person instruction. I just beg you to please listen to the families. We know our children. We have not been given that option. Hybrid isn't, isn't a, a, a solution, especially not for our students that are suffering, students that academically are suffering. They're suffering socially, they're suffering mentally. This, your job is the students. And so I just believe that that would be the best case. I also want to speak to the teachers. I do want to commend the teachers. They've been given a really impossible task. We have great teachers here at Abington, but they are at their best when they are able to do their job the way that they were trained and what they were hired to do, and that is in the classroom. And then one last comment to the, to the parent that said walking in the doors would not magically change everything. Yes, it does. My daughter is a different person when she gets home from the two days that she's there. And then it's completely different for her the other days. I'm just saying that as a mother, I know my child and I know what is best for her. Her grades will jump back up. She will, she's resilient. Our children are resilient. And when they are back in the classroom and can receive that in-person learning, they will bounce back. Abington will come back stronger than ever. I beg you, plead with you to please vote yes today, to have our students back in the classroom. And to all parents who are fearful, I hear you. I respect your choice. You can have your kids at home. It is amazing that our elementary parents have a dedicated teacher. That's phenomenal. I do not have that. My children are in high school. We don't have that dedicated option. Their best chance for education that can never be given back to them in high school is in person. A second grader who's fallen behind is tragic, but that second grader then has 10 more years at Abington to get back and get caught back up. Abington can do that for them. You can offer lots of help in the years ahead to get your students caught up. You cannot give that to my June, to my sophomore or senior. That this is, this is valuable time. Please don't take any more of their time and their education away from them. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Jerelyn? Jerelyn, you're muted? Are they gone, Dr. Mann? Oh, no, there we go. Oh, no. Marissa? Marissa appears to be muted also. And you are muted also, Dr. Mann.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm, I'm trying to ask Marissa to unmute. Sending a message, but apparently it's not. Okay, maybe we'll go to next and perhaps come back.
Okay. Jim McBetty?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thanks for taking the time. And like everyone else said, thanks for all your contributions. I'll try and keep this well under three minutes. First, I have three main points. First is I want kids back in the classroom. But if you can't solve that six-foot separation issue, I just don't think you can get there. I really want you to think very hard about that. The second point is if you want kids to succeed, you have to set teachers up for success. We are all honoring teachers in our own way, but I encourage the board to put forward a resolution for a special day of celebration, recognizing the efforts of teachers, staff, admin, support, all of you who are putting in the effort. You should give them a parade with confetti and you should give them a bonus at the end of the year. But more importantly, you should develop a comprehensive professional development plan. What little I've seen online is not enough. They need PD around technology, pedagogy, social, emotional learning. It can't be relegated to the school counselors. It's got to be fibrous to the organization. Every teacher needs to be equipped with SEL. The board should review that comprehensive plan and should fund it, full stop. Do not short-change teachers. And finally, to the board, I think you as a body need to do a better job around your own communication. Mr. Azar actually has stepped up, and I'm so glad. He's modeled what good proactive communication looks like. I think some of you should pay attention because you don't feel as checked in as others, and I think that's part of the issue. Monthly marathon meetings simply aren't enough. So I'd call on you to commission some working committee to figure out a better form of communication, series of protocols, and an improved cadence so the community feels connected. Those are my points. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you. Marissa, again, should we try her?
I'm not sure Marissa's able to maybe perhaps know that she's.
Okay.
Call that.
Michael Gunnell's?
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So yes, I, I live in Clark Screen. I've got three children in the district. And my oldest is a type one diabetic, who I, I, I think may be at high risk if he were to, to develop COVID. And my other two children genetically are at risk for also developing type one diabetes. And there's indications that COVID could bring out type one diabetes in my other two children based on some data and indications that are, that are globally available, showing that there's increased type one diabetes diagnosis since post-COVID. So I do realize that there is a virtual option and I'm, I'm thankful for that. And we've been taking advantage of that. We were ready to go back to a hybrid two-day-a-week, but if there's a four- or five-day-a-week option, that would just be too risky for us. We're not ready to take the chance of, of our kids going back and being less social-distanced than, than six feet. I think that is very risky to go against the CDC recommendations of the social distancing. And there's a lot of unknowns about COVID because it's still very new to us. And they're still learning, you know, every day they're learning more stuff. There's more data collected. So I think it's, it's very aggressive to go back full-time and it's, it's at great risk. So I mean, it, the six feet is a, is a technical problem, obviously, and the, the pandemic is an issue. That's a, a technical issue that just doesn't go away because we wanted to. So I, I, I sympathize with everyone that's, that's tired of it and they want to go back to full-time. But it is a complex issue that takes some deep thought and, and to go against CDC recommendations, I think is, is strong and, and there's a lot of risk with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Mike, if you could unmute?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So, hey, hi, this is Mike Deeter, Clark Summit. Hi, I have two kids in the high school. So most of my observations are going to be at the high school level, not elementary or middle school. I can just tell you from talking to my girls and their friends, you know, the hybrid has definitely run its course at the high school level. They're, from, from what I'm gathering, motivation's very low. There's very little learning going on. The education level has definitely dropped dramatically. A lot of the kids and a lot of the teachers have checked out. It's not a shot against them at all, either, either group, but it's the truth. Mental health, mental health is suffering a lot with this age group. And it's impacting their education. A, a huge segment of the high schoolers, I believe, from what I'm hearing. I will tell you this, though, from the other side, a lot of kids are socializing. Kids are getting together, mostly probably in their smaller groups. So they're trying to make up for, up for it that way. I do want to share, I know a lot of people are getting hung up on the six feet. And you know, whether you're five feet or seven feet away, probably doesn't make much of a difference. We all have our own opinions. But I'll tell you, both my kids have been working in grocery stores. The older one has worked in a grocery store throughout the entire pandemic. She has never been six feet away from people in that grocery store, especially on the weekends. And, and my kids aren't the only ones working in grocery stores. We have a bunch of high school kids working in grocery stores or other stores, and we all have to shop. Yet we decided not to pull them out. And there's no way they're six feet apart in grocery store. I'm just telling you. You guys have all shopped there. And, you know, I, I think that we can make a little bit of an exception for the six feet. If it's four and a half or five, is it really going to make a difference? My sister has kids down in York County. They've been going five days a week the entire time. Small percentage of kids are staying home. So if we're not going to go back now for the rest of the year, I asked the board and everybody else, what's the end game? I mean, I know we don't know where this is going, but it's been about a year. What's the end game? When are we ever going to go back? Life is full of risk. At some point, you've got away the risk of your kids and their education and their mental health and everything that goes with it. So for the rest of this year, you know, I think we should listen to the survey results and, and go with the parents' wishes. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Machino? Did I?
Hi. No, you're right. Kelly. Hi, so my name is Kelly Viquino and I have three children in the district. Two are at the middle school and I also have a high school senior who you probably know. We support our children going back to school five days a week. I believe we should all have a choice. If you want your children to go five days a week, you should have the option to do that. For the families that are afraid to have their children going back, they should also have the option to stay virtual. For those of you who know me, I am a huge supporter of the teachers. And when I listen to Mr. Lavelle talk, he says that we have teachers that cannot teach in the classroom because of a disability due to whatever COVID or pre, pre-existing condition. I believe that we do have several teachers in that position. I also don't understand why those teachers would not be able to be the teachers that would be able to teach the virtual classrooms. Like I said, we support our children going back five days a week, and I think for their mental health as well, it's important for them to be in the school. We talk about how some people have been out socializing and doing different things. I have been working since day one of the pandemic. And I work with a lot of people in a very confined space. We have managed. I think it's wonderful that our teachers are able to get the vaccine and I hope that that would make them feel more comfortable being back in the classroom. But I just want to say that my family and my children would very much appreciate to go back to school. I do not want to have to look at other options for my children. I want to keep them in the school district. And I thank you for your time and appreciate everything that you do for us. Thank you.
And Mrs. Viquino, before you get off, I just, I know I speak on behalf of the board in thanking you for sharing your extraordinary daughter with us for a couple hours each month.
Thank you so much.
Okay, J. Okay, Jerelyn Besserkoskis? Jerelyn, are you there? I, I see you're not muted. Jerelyn? Nope. Let's go to Mary Ann Dr. May, and then maybe you can go back to Jerelyn if she would, wishes to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Rooney. I have four kids in the district, one at each of the different grade levels. And I did answer to go back five days. I, I understand how serious this disease is. I do not take the situation that our country is in lightly at all. There are risks. I understand that. But I believe the risk can be mitigated with masks, cleaning, hand washing. Clearly, we need to fix some sinks in the schools. I think that is all achievable. And I think three, two, five feet of distance would be acceptable. I see this firsthand. Our children are suffering after a full year of losing purpose. They are losing their purpose, drive, and motivation. I know that school is not a cure-all for any mental health issue. But what I do know is that getting up every day, getting out of your bed, leaving your room to go to school, sorry for, I'm just passionate about this, and interacting with other humans is something that is super important for our children after a full year of not doing this. So to me, it is very important to get our kids back full time. I do not think waiting till fall is the approach to take because I don't know what the situation is going to be in fall. We know as a school, we cannot six feet distance if we want all our kids back in. We don't have the space, the teachers, any of that. So that won't change in the fall either. I really feel passionately that our kids are suffering more than people realize. No amount of guidance counselors, how, no matter how wonderful our counselors are, there's not enough. The kids need to get out of bed and get in school and, and have that interaction. So I do thank you all for your time and your service. I really appreciate it. I know that none of this is easy, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Samantha?
And Mrs. Vurchalsky, this is Phil. So just in terms of process, I know we've been at this for, you know, including executive session, almost four hours. When is there appropriate break?
Um, I, can you make it through the rest of the speakers or not? Would you like to wait until then? Then we won't do the agenda. We'll take a break as soon as public comments.
I mean, people are being at it, so I just wanted to, to draw a line somewhere.
Okay, let's say we will draw the line at nine thirty. Is that fair enough?
That's cool.
Okay, thank you.
I think we need to let people speak. I, I know this is a long process.
I don't think he means we're not going to cut it, we're, we're just going to take a break and come back to it. We'll give them
Yeah, no, I'm not suggesting we cut people off. It's just a break.
Five minute, at nine thirty, but we'll, we'll continue until nine thirty and then take a five minute break, or not even three minute break? Okay?
Okay. Hi, I'm calling in because I am a little confused. It seems like a little bit of a false dichotomy here that we're making people choose either all virtual or five days a week versus letting people decide to also stay hybrid because then you would have less people in the schools. So I, I, I understand that it's considered distracted teaching, and that's the argument against hybrid, but you're still going to have people at home till the end of the year this year. So it doesn't, it just doesn't seem to make sense to me to present that as, as the options. It seems like keeping hybrid as an option seems like a good idea. That's all.
That, that isn't, that is also something we can talk about, Dr. May. I'm sure you must have had reasons for eliminating the hybrid option, like if, if students, if essentially the teachers at the high school level continue to teach the hybrid model just by virtue of, of teaching their remote students, is there a reason that that would not make sense to allow some students to come only two days a week? But you still wouldn't have a social, well, I don't know, I guess you would if you had less students in the building. Is that it?
Well, it, it is an issue for the teachers.
Okay.
Now they are managing two groups of students. If, if we were to also include the hybrid, they'd be managing three groups of students, which, you know, we, the fact that more people will be in the classroom makes it harder to add another layer of virtual in class and now hybrid is really just, I, I think would be not the appropriate solution.
But isn't, isn't there really only two because you've got your virtual students, and then you have your students in the building, right?
Right, but the issue would be if, if I'm teaching a class and you know, I, I can predict this group is going to be virtual all the time, and I have it set up, and I know these students will be in all the time. If I have a student who's in and out as far as distribution of materials and managing the plans, it, it really does add another layer of complexity to an already overtaxed group.
Okay, fair enough. Okay. Katie Jackson?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you guys so much for letting me speak. I just wanted to speak real quickly. I'm going to try to do it without getting emotionally. For me, I have two kids in the district. I have one who's a sophomore in high school, and I have a child who's in first grade at CSE. And firstly, I'd like to thank their teachers for doing such an amazing job. Watching it every day, sitting with my son when he's virtual, seeing the amazing job that his teacher does. I don't know how she does it, but it's absolutely amazing. I have so many fantastic friends that are teachers in the district, and I know how hard they're working. And I don't know how they do it because it's, they're like superheroes to me. But I just, I really would love to see my children have the option of at least four days a week, especially my son who's in first grade, and I just know how much he's missing socially, emotionally, educationally, especially with the weather we've had lately. I think he's been to school maybe four times in the past couple months, and it's just not the same for him learning at home as it is when he has the experience of learning at school with his teacher. I can't do what she does. She is a superstar, and I cannot keep up with what she does. And I just really could worry about my daughter, who on the other hand is a sophomore in high school, who will be going to her junior year. And I know how extremely important that is when it comes to applying to colleges and her future. So I'm worried on two different levels with two different children who are going through different worries. I see it affect them, and as a mom, it breaks my heart. And I completely understand the dangers of COVID. I have family members that had COVID. I have great friends that had COVID, and I know it's very real and very dangerous. And I'm so thankful that we do have a virtual option for that. But I know for my children, and I know for a lot of other children, the benefits of being in school just doesn't compare to only being there once or twice in a month. So I just really love the board to consider at least four days a week would be fantastic. I would take that with a, a cleaning day on Wednesday would be phenomenal. Just to see my kids be who they were a year ago would be fantastic, and I would do anything for that. And I just really urge the board to think about the effects it has on so many different age groups, not just educationally, emotionally, socially, so many different things that they're missing out on. And again, I understand the dangers are real, and I understand people's fears, but thankfully, we do have that virtual option. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Carol Mott?
Ms. Vurchalsky, the column shifted, and I have Mr. Gilboy.
Okay.
We'll have to come back to Ms. Mott.
I don't even see her there anymore at all, right?
Okay.
Okay.
And if I disconnected her, I, my apologies if you just re-log on. We'll get you there, but we have now Mr. Gilboy.
Hi, it's not Mr. Gilboy, it's Mrs. Gilboy, but
Gilboy, either way.
Thank you to everybody and all the hard work that everything's been put in. I do want to say thank you to Mr. Azar and Mr. Mayhem for actually going into the classroom and seeing what an actual hybrid day looks like. I was wondering if any of the other school board members have done the same because I think you should if you haven't already. With that being said, I was very much a proponent of getting these kids back in five days a week. However, after Mr. Azar had discussed what his observations are, I am leaning more towards and completely agree with Mr. Azar's observations that I do not feel it's effective learning style if you have twenty-four kids in the classroom and two online. I think that will continue to jeopardize some of the learning and teaching that is already on shaky ground. I mean, these teachers are doing a great, great job and to the best of their capabilities. With that being said, if a hybrid model is continued or voted to continue at this point, these kids' mental health really is a concern. I'm a pediatric provider. The majority of my patients these days are all behavioral and mental health patients. This is a real concern. It may even be a bigger concern than the education and kids falling behind. So if the hybrid model is voted to be continued, is the school willing to either allow parents to petition the, whatever school it is, high school, middle school, elementary school, if a child is considered high risk? So with a diagnosis of maybe anxiety, depression, ADHD, without actually having to have a 504 plan put in place and go through the parameters of educational accommodations?
Is that a direct question?
Yes.
With Dr. May? Because I can't answer that.
Yeah, that was just my solution if we did stay hybrid for some of those high-risk kids, either whether they were identified by the teachers or by parents. If they, if a child has a diagnosis from a provider, you know, that would provide them to be at risk, just like the ones I had mentioned, would they be able to be put back in school or be allowed to be attend school that, you know, to, at four days a week?
Sure. And if I, I, I will, I will certainly try to respond. I'll certainly let you finish your remarks, and then when you're done, I will try to answer that question.
All done. I'm done.
Okay, perfect. All right. Yes, we have been working, I think as the board, board knows, and with the board's encouragement. We started out with smaller groups of students who have special needs and to come back four days per week. We have been slowly building out that group. We just had a very, very large addition to students going four days a week because of the, the crisis level struggling we've seen with respect to academics at the high school. So we've been working, you know, we, we've tried to be fair and systematic about it, and trying to treat kids the best we can. We work with individuals on a case-by-case basis. So any particular parent who has such a request could certainly present it to their building principal, and we have been moving in that direction very steadily since the start of the school year.
Okay, I see Carol Mott is back in the lineup. Oh, and she is gone again. Oh, there it is. I, I don't know.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Disconnecting you before, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, it's okay. I just put a bullseye on your head on my phone here. Thanks, everybody, for coming on tonight. I know it's been a really long meeting. As you know, I have two students in the high school. I have one that just came in, and I with heavy heart have one exiting this year. So it's kind of, I, you know, I have a heavy heart on both ends here because it's been a struggle for both of the children. That said, I have one that's thriving doing on virtual, but I also have one who's not doing as, as well. So that said, I'm very split. I'm also a nurse, so I have a lot of concerns about the safety, obviously, for, you know, I've been working in the last year trying to keep our community safe and from, from COVID. But there was a couple of things that I just was listening to tonight that I just felt that I had to speak up. I do realize that there's, you know, the, the, the six feet apart is going to be an issue, but you know, like I said at the beginning, I have two children at home, one that I said is thriving, one not so much by staying home, but I was wondering if maybe there's a, you know, there's another option here. Maybe if we ask the community a survey that, you know, that the kids that are doing online that are, that are thriving, maybe they would volunteer to stay home to make more rooms in person in the school where we can, you know, achieve that six feet. I thinking that, you know, the masking is, is detrimental. I mean, it is, it's very hard, but I spend most of my day, every day at work. Put your mask on, lift up your mask, put your mask on, right? I mean, if I got paid just by telling somebody to do that, I wouldn't have to work full time. So I can, and these are adults. So with the children, I think it's more manageable in a classroom where there's a teacher there monitoring, you know, that's going to play the part of, you know, put your mask on, please put your mask on. But what about lunchtime? That's going to be a little bit difficult to eat and not have a mask on, and that's where I believe the six feet needs to come into play. The classrooms, we can probably get skimmed by on that. But when the masks need to be down in those areas, that I think that that's where we're going to have to could get creative. Again, that's why I think a survey of maybe those students that are want to stay home, that are striving online, so we make more rooms in the school could be an option, like we, you know, I'm already hearing teachers are going to have to do hybrid and in-class anyway, so if that's going to be something that we're going to have to deal with, then why don't we use it to our advantage? One of the other things is, I, I think we, you know, the survey did say four or five days. I really would push if we have to do this, if we have to push back into the schools, that maybe four days would be a better option, maybe considering Wednesday, that day that we come in and do that extra cleaning because there's going to be more activity in the school. That may be something to consider. And I think my last point would be, I heard that there were, somebody saying that, you know, we want, you know, all the teachers are vaccinated, so why don't we just send them in? I think that we need to educate the community as well, that just because you're double that, I'm vaccinated twice, just because I'm vaccinated twice and have both vaccines, and it does not mean I cannot get COVID and carry it to somebody else. And it does not mean that I can't get COVID. It means that I hopefully will not get it, you know, if I do get it, it's like the flu, I don't get it as bad. But I would still be a carrier. Does not mean that I, I, just because I have the vaccine that I will not contract or can spread it. So that, that needs to be considered if we're going to say, well, if all the teachers are vaccinated, then our children are safe because that's just not factual.
Okay, I, I hate to interrupt. I'm sorry, can you wrap it up? You, you've gone beyond the three minutes and
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That was it. That was it. I just wanted to put my idea on there. My kids are waiting to the announcement of we're going to have a school play or not. That's, that's our biggest thing we're waiting for.
Okay, thank you. Jerelyn? Did we, we tried Jerelyn before, right, last?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I figured the third time would be the charm, so I would just call back three times, you know? All right, well, hello, my name is Jerelyn Besserkoskis, and I wanted to start by saying thank you to everyone for your efforts throughout this difficult time. That being said, I'll be short and sweet and simple. All the comments tonight are great, but families in the district have already spoken via the survey. The board is voted in with the hopes that they will represent the communities in which they serve. I feel the board must vote for the four to five days in person, along with the option for virtual, for families that so choose. If the board denies the families the right to a proper education, I feel you'll be denying families to choose an appropriate education specifically for their children. The data has spoken, and Abington has always filed the data and excelled. I hope the board looks for the data that our families have submitted and votes for what the voters in their areas want. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think we, we have two more speakers, I believe, Dr. May. Can we just get through these two more and then pause? And we will be finished? Is that, or do we have more than two? We just got a few more added? And we will be finished? Is that, or do we have more than two? We just got a few more added? All right, I did promise, uh, Mr. Robson, we would take a five-minute break. It is five minutes too long? We go three minutes or five minutes? What does everybody want to do?
Three.
Three? Sounds good. I think three is plenty. Okay, we'll be back here at nine thirty-four. Okay, nine thirty-four. All right, I believe Dr. Mann, Christopher Moore is next.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for having me. Uh, thank you to the board. I will get to the point. My, my concern with the survey is sort of how, and, and I, and I guess I will say, I understand some of these issues are in part due to having the survey ahead of some of these conversations. But some of the questions that we have to answer with those data would require a certain amount of, uh, granularity we don't have. For example, we have students, many students now in a hybrid situation. I have two students. I'm in Clark Summit. Uh, they're at the junior high who are in hybrid. And I, to be honest, didn't know how to answer your survey because of course, as some other parents have said, I lacked a little bit of information about how the future might look, uh, under some of these models. In particular, if I chose online, um, and enough people chose online, the reasons for choosing online would because I don't want to put my child in a situation where they would be within six feet of another child. But of course, I would rather have them in the class. So what am I to do? Are parents to try to cross their fingers and say, I will put my child in class and hope to, that there's not too many. And if there is, then I will change my mind and put them online, which would of course completely create problems and headaches for the district. Or, or what, right? There, there's sort of a, we need to maybe have a little more clarity about how, how, uh, parents are to choose and how permanent those choices are when it comes to, uh, making these, these movements forward. I guess, and I, and, and the other thing I will mention is if we do move to a five or four-day everyday class, uh, especially at the elementary schools, I would strongly encourage us to, uh, think about keeping that four-day option. That, that middle day of the week, that's a prep period for many of these teachers is critical when they're trying to manage multiple populations. Without that day, uh, which they so desperately need now, they would be much, uh, harder pressed to handle the, the new workloads we're proposing to put on them. So those two issues revol- involving sort of how the public, how to interpret the public's response to that earlier survey, I think lost in there might be some of the decisions parents had to make about what to choose because they didn't really know what those, those outcomes would look like. Uh, if I chose to put my kids now, I'd say online because I don't want to put them in a class where they are going to be so close to others. Of course, if I found a weekend, one weekend that, that there's plenty of space in that class, I'm going to want them there. And I don't think I'm going to be alone. And I think that's something we have to think through. What's that going to look like? I guess I'll wrap up by saying, and I, and I don't mean to say this as a sort of rebuke to some of people who commented, and I hope it doesn't sound that way, but our board is entrusted, uh, to use the best available knowledge, of course, to make these decisions and, and, and although being elected officials, um, the public, public health or, or even public education is not something we should leave to the majority of opinion, uh, of people who are themselves not equipped to make some of these decisions. Very often, the public gets things wrong. Our sentiments might wish be in wishful thinking sorts of ways towards one way, but the data and good science points somewhere else. And as much as I sympathize with you and, and, um, I guess I, I empathize with the pressure you're under. I would say that, um, despite our, uh, our, 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 our school district and many of the parents who have responded pushing you in one direction, I guess I would say, think about what's realistic. Don't think in terms of averages or best-case scenario. Think in terms of weakest links. We need to make sure we don't fail. The, the cost of failing is probably something we should keep in mind more than reaching for lofty goals in this situation. We are not going to achieve what we want. We're going to try to avoid what we don't want to have happen. And that is something that involves, as you, as some others said, uh, an unfortunate circumstance we have to live with. I think that the district needs to maybe.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Moore. We've let you go beyond the three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, please.
Wrap it up?
Oh, sure. Um, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I don't, I don't mean to take more time. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Nadia Rodi, Rodishkin? I'm sorry if I'm butchering that.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, my name is Nadia Rodishkin, and I do have two kids in Abington High School. One is a senior and one is a sixth grader. And they're both doing well. You know, the teacher's been wonderful. I can't say anything. And I think they're doing, you know, a very good job, but they can do so much better. They can get so much more knowledge, so much more experience. My senior is taking very, you know, a lot of engineering courses. He can't possibly do them at home. It's just not feasible. My sixth grader, you know, he's doing well, but the interaction between the kids and the teachers is not the same. It can possibly the same, like, through the virtual, you know, and with snow, so many snow days and everything, they're hardly in school ever. And just like personal, like, interaction with kids. I, like, I think they all needed, like, water. Anytime the kids would meet outside with one another wearing masks, they'll just like, almost like thirsty, you know, like trying to get that communication, you know, going. So, um, I'd just like to say that we all took the surveys and sixty-five percent of us did vote four or five days a week, or like at least four. And I consider the parents I'm talking to and other ones in Abington are very responsible, very edu- well-educated people. And it's been a year, so we did all our research as well. So we're not taking the survey lightly. And the three feet was mentioned in the survey, so sixty-five percent who did vote for that opening of the school, we all are well aware of the three feet that the kids need to, you know, be having between them. So, um, I'd just like to say that, you know, we've been responsible and the kids, as far as the mask going, like, I never heard a single, you know, complaint from the teachers or the kids that they don't want to wear a mask. They've been wearing it for eight hours straight with not a single wink because they want to be so badly in school that they'll do whatever they need to, just to be back. So that's all I would like to say. And like I said, the high school, like other parents said before, is so important, the quality of that education, because the teachers are just so great, but they need to be in school to get the very good quality, you know, that they deserve. This junior year has been not great. And now the senior year for my senior is not, you know, going as well as he would hoping to. So, you know, with all the AP courses and everything, you know, they can get so much more knowledge out of it. And, you know, time is essence. So I would strongly ask you guys to vote for five, four days a week, whatever you guys decide. Thank you. And another thing I just want to mention real quick. I'm a nurse and I'm a essential worker. I've been at work, you know, I didn't get vaccine till like a month ago. The teachers are essential workers too. I understand the risk, but we're all risking our lives the whole year. And that's, you know, like, we all need to be in this together, like everybody said before. You know, it's thank you.
Thank you. Nancy De La Sra- Rios? Nancy, you're muted? Dr. Mann, do you want to do Jill Morosky and we can come back to Nancy?
Hi.
Hello.
Thank you so much for giving me a chance to talk. I'm sorry. I know it's late. Um, and I appreciate everything. I appreciate the teachers and the administration, but I'm going to jump into the few points that I have. Um, I just keep sitting here thinking tonight, when did you individually as school board members ever imagine in your life that you will be sitting in on a Zoom call to hear so many parents telling you that their children are suffering? And they're telling you this because they are looking for action from you and because you can take action. My nine-year-old came into our room a few nights ago and was just absolutely sobbing. She's, mommy, I need people, I need people, I need to see people. And when Stephanie had called in, I think it was the previous board meeting and said, we don't understand yet even what the long-term of this suffering is going to be. I think that could not be more true. And this, I mean, this next part with all politeness, but I have to say the disconnect that is there, that we have had this call go on for how long now? And not a single one of you has had a sibling that's eight years old go running behind you on the screen, screaming. Nobody has had somebody coming into your room checking for Legos or putting away laundry or interrupting your call. You have had your internet working this whole time. Nobody got kicked out of the meat. Nobody's concealing a Nintendo Switch below view of the camera. Um, I think this is very different from what some of our students go through on a typical day. Also, it was mentioned earlier that all of the schools had their second round of parent-teacher conferences. I don't think at the elementary level that we did. Um, at least I certainly didn't. And we haven't received our second report cards for elementary students. So I can't even grasp, other than the suffering, how students are doing because how the report cards to begin with are, are different, which I understand it has to be different right now, um, to assess the kids. But we haven't seen the report cards for the second semester or second trimester yet. We have no way to assess them. We haven't spoken to the teachers for parent-teacher conference since the beginning of the year. It's just, I, I think, I think the suffering is apparent, and I think it's hard to even know how to remedy things other than going back. Also, I, I know, uh, Mr. Azar had been, um, doing a little background and a little, um, homework on seeing how the schools are operating, but I'm curious if you've seen an agenda, a daily agenda for the elementary level? If any of the board members, have you seen what it usually looks like? And this is, I am so proud of our parents and the administration and the staff. And I, I do think our kids are getting the best of what they can get for hybrid. But, so for example, for an elementary student agenda, they have a morning meet on Wednesday. Then they have a to-do list, which takes them from about ten-thirty or eleven AM until one forty-five PM. And then they go back for an afternoon meet. So the whole middle of the day, they're just on their own. I mean, certainly, hopefully they're in a supervised home. They have a to-do list that's a few minutes long, maybe a few worksheets. And that's it. And that's what we're calling hybrid in, in a virtual day of education, when the whole middle of the day, they're just playing Legos and, oh, mommy, I finished my work already. It's all done. And also, I, I think it's worth noting, with all of these parents that are in the queue calling in, all of the emotions and the complaints and the heartfelt thoughts in every direction, not one parent has called in to complain and say, how dare you, my child got COVID at school.
I, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Morosky, can you just wrap it up? You've been, you're beyond the three minutes?
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Um, Nancy, do we want to try Nancy De La Sraios one more time?
Doesn't seem to work. I'll send, ask to unmute, maybe that will help.
Nancy, I think you're on mute. Are you? Maybe she's not actually there right at the moment. Uh, Greg Emiliani?
How you doing, everybody? Thanks for your time. Um, I, I believe the simplest solution is you have.
I'm sorry, Mr. Emiliani, can you just, uh, state where you're from? Are you?
Um.
South Abington?
Yeah, Clark Summit, uh, have a student at Waverly, I have a student at, uh, Abington Middle. Um, I, I think, you know, the common sense and simplest solution is already in front of us. We have sixty-five percent of the district parents who are literally begging uh, for their, their children to go back to school. And we have the other thirty-five percent roughly, uh, who are saying that they feel that maybe it's too dangerous, whatever their personal views may be, uh, that they'd rather stay in the current mindset. So if we took the sixty-five percent and allowed them to go back to a four to five the day, day a week, school week, uh, that would solve their concerns. school week, uh, that would solve their concerns. And the other 35% who would prefer to stay, whether it be hybrid or full virtual, that would solve their concerns and we would have something that we could put into place that is relatively simple.
Okay. Is that it?
Other than the fact that when it comes down to data and statistics, it's just not there to support the immense amount of danger that is being portrayed. Um, I'm a frontline worker myself and, you know, I've seen it affect different people in different ways. Not negating the fact that it's out there. Uh, however, when, when you look at what the statistical data says for school-aged children, the danger just isn't there. Now, I understand the possible transmissions to family members at home, elderly, et cetera. Uh, but as we start rolling through people getting vaccinated, that should diminish those areas of concern. Um, and then, you know, moving forward, uh, I feel that the district is doing a great job of providing a safe environment for the kids. And, uh, you know, I don't believe that it's a, it's an issue of concern with the district not being safe enough in terms of cleanliness, uh, social distancing, usage of masks. So I think that should quell a lot of the concerns that.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Emiliani. Dr. Mann, did we allow Samantha? I can't, I don't recall if she spoke, she might be the last one, or maybe she already spoke.
She spoke.
Samantha did the, it looks like we're finished, I believe, right?
Okay, I think we are.
I think we are. I think that concludes our public comment.
So I'll share my screen back to the agenda, Mrs. Prashalsky.
Hold on, one more just came on.
Carly, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. I'd like to thank the board for letting me voice my opinion. Um, I have to say, I agree with Dr. Cadman and a lot of the other parents. As parents, my husband and I urge you to remain in a hybrid model. We have three daughters, one in the elementary school, one in the middle school, and one in the high school. They are currently virtual and they have been since October and they are doing very, very well. We had hopes to send them hybrid in the spring, but we will remain virtual if a four to five day week is implemented. We are not comfortable with a less than six foot distance. And while there are virtual options, I feel that this takes away the opportunity for my children to return hybrid. We do want a full return, absolutely, but not at the expense of their health, at the expense of our health from carrying the virus home, or the expense of anybody else's health, including the teachers, the aides, the maintenance crew, anybody else there. We urge you, please do not return to a full school model. Let's focus on the fall of 2020 for a full return. And also just, this is something that is going to be in our children's memory for a very long time and how they learn to handle a pandemic at a crisis like this. Things can't always be the same every time. This is showing them how to handle things as adults. And sometimes things just can't be the way you want them to, but you have to get through it and that things do get better. Um, I'd also just like to say, what a great job the teachers are doing. They can switch from virtual back to hybrid, back to virtual, sometimes in no time at all, in just, you know, a moment's notice. And thank you to all the aides and staff members in the schools that are making this possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Dr. Mann, if you would put the agenda back up. At this time, I'm, I need a motion to approve the bills.
Don't move.
Don't move.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Dr. Cadman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medenski?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusiteri?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prashalsky?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
And can, Mr. Medenski, can we have the treasurer's report?
I like the idea that you call me a doctor, but that's, that'll never happen. Anyway, uh, beginning cash balance for January was $28,857,941. We had revenues of $1,288,470, which of that was the real estate taxes were $576,946 and wage taxes were $192,000. Uh, total disbursements for the month were $3,894,596,000, which gives us a cash balance
Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medenski?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusiteri?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman?
Yes.
Mrs. Prashalsky?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Okay, Dr. Mann, can we have the personnel report?
Yes, Mrs. Prashalsky. Hold on one second. Okay. So we request the board to approve the personnel report as follows. Uh, under number one, the resignation of Faith Hoffman as a teacher's aide effective of the 19th of February, and the appointment of Peter Daniels as a game manager at $25 per game.
Don't move.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Mr. Medenski?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusiteri?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Prashalsky?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
And we ask the board to consider a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 NEIU budget as contained in item number one, which contains a no increase in assessment to the district.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? It's actually a decrease, Dr. Mann.
That is correct.
Which is quite shocking.
Yep.
Oh, they're doing a very good job. I credit him and his work there.
They, they really are. Roll call?
Mrs. Prusiteri?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medenski?
Yes.
Mrs. Prashalsky?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
And we ask the board to consider a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 Sweet Stevens, Katz &amp; Williams fee agreement as contained in item, item number two, also representing no increase to the district.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medenski?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusiteri?
Yes.
Mrs. Prashalsky?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
And we request the board to approve the daily rate change for Van 4B as a result of an extended run during the middle of the day.
So moved. Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medenski?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusiteri?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mrs. Prashalsky?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
And we request the board to approve the settlement agreement as contained in item number three.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yep, this, this is Phil. So typically we discuss these in executive session and we do not. And I thought we agreed in previous meetings, we weren't going to bring this up if they weren't discussed.
So Robson, my view is very different and I do believe board members had ample opportunity to discuss this. I, I, I do not share that view.
Roll call? Mr. A- Wait, do we have a, do we have a motion? I'm sorry, Mr. Robson jumped in. Okay, roll call?
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medenski?
Abstain.
Mrs. Prusiteri?
Yes.
Mr. Robson? Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mrs. Prashalsky?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one no, and one abstention.
Request the board to approve the settlement agreement between Abington Heights School District and Student Number Five X as contained in number four.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medenski?
Abstain.
Mrs. Prusiteri?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
No.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Mrs. Prashalsky?
Yes.
Motion carries eight with one abstention and one no.
And we request the board to approve the settlement agreement between Abington Heights School District and Student Six X as contained in number five.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Dr. Cadman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medenski?
Abstain.
Mrs. Prusiteri?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
No.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prashalsky?
Yes.
Motion carries with eight, one abstention, and one no.
And we request the board to approve the February volunteer list as contained in item number six.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medenski?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusiteri?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman?
Yes.
Mrs. Prashalsky?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Okay, moving to letter K, consider a motion to approve the second reading of the Abington Heights School District Policy 218.3 as contained in number seven.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Mr. Medenski?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusiteri?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Prashalsky?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
And we request the board to approve the tuition reimbursement report contained in item number eight.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Uh, yes, I, I, it's not a question, I have a comment. Quite often we struggle with some of the course load in colleges that our faculty have the opportunity to take. And I want to commend quite a few excellent courses here. And it looks like they were very difficult courses. And so I commend our faculty for taking this time also during this crazy time to take such rigorous courses to continue their education and their knowledge that they, an issue that they know that they have and something that the district offers them. So congratulations to them, great courses.
Thank you. Roll call?
Mrs. Prusiteri?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medenski?
Yes.
Mrs. Prashalsky?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
And we ask the board to consider a motion to enter into an agreement with OCA for the collection of non-COVID premiums as stated in item number nine.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medenski?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusiteri?
Yes.
Mrs. Prashalsky?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
And we ask the board to consider a motion to enter into an agreement with UGI for the purchase of electricity at fixed rates as stated in item number 10.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Dr. Mann, did we have other bids for this?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Mirabelli for that, Mr. Acker. Uh, we didn't have formal bids, so to speak, because we, you know, you go out to the market at a certain point. I did speak with a couple of their vendors who gave me a pulse of the market, where they're at, and they also gave me their fee structure as to what they charge. Uh, everyone was sort of in the, in the, you know, sort of the same playing field. Uh, you'll notice in your folder, this is actually an updated document as the, the market sort of changes rapidly. So as of the close of business today, this is what the market represented.
So we didn't, we didn't have any other formal proposals?
Uh, no, not at, not as far as going out to market formally as, as we've done here.
Okay, roll call?
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medenski?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusiteri?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mrs. Prashalsky?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
And we ask the board to consider a motion to approve the sound system proposal with Endeavor Audio and Lighting as contained in number 11.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yep, so this is Phil. I, I saw the, the list of, of prices and, and everything looked good. Was this, I didn't see where it was fixed fee or the work was done by a, is it done by a contractor or done by us?
Uh, the work, the work is included in this, Mr. Robson. So Endeavor Audio would be providing, providing both the equipment and the installation.
Okay, so it's a fixed fee?
It is a fixed fee.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yep.
And how soon would they be able to have it installed? So when will we be able to do our first board meeting?
I, I want to encourage them to have it for our March work session. I'm not sure if that's possible, but if, if, if this is approved, I'll be on the phone with them tomorrow saying, you know, we want this in and we want to get back together in person again.
Okay, great. Roll call?
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medenski?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusiteri?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mrs. Prashalsky?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
And I'm, I'm very pleased to request the board to approve the personnel list for the Spring Musical Disney's Freaky Friday. And I also want to thank all involved, Mrs. Colwell especially, for the scrupulous work they've done in planning for not only a great production, but also a safe one.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Dr. Cadman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medenski?
Yes.
Mrs. Prusiteri?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Mrs. Boshalsky?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Dr. May, looking for motion number Q?
Did I miss? Yes, and the most important one.
Yes, I was, I thought you were just looking for it.
No, that is totally my fault.
This concludes the meeting.
And it concludes the meeting. Oh my.
No, it doesn't.
Totally my fault. So we consider a motion to authorize the, that's terrible. That is totally terrible. After all that, so we request the board to consider a motion to authorize administration to implement a five-day per week in-person return to school beginning on or about March eighth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Jean Cadman, so on the question, I just want to reiterate, I think Christopher Moore put it better than I did about the survey. I was going to use the word flawed, but that is probably too strong, but I don't think that it was explicit in the fact that six feet of distance would not be maintained in terms of the mitigation efforts. And then I think Carly kind of hit what I wanted to say about the hybrid students. I think thirty-five percent, you know, said they wouldn't be comfortable coming back. I don't know if that included the all virtual, who what I hear is that they were considering maybe coming back hybrid, which for them would have been a step forward, you know, which what is what we're kind of doing, everybody moving a little bit forward. So it would deprive them of any opportunity for their students to have any direct teacher contact, which I don't think, you know, is, you know, fair. I feel bad, bad about that, that they have to choose safety, do you know what I mean, over their children having direct contact with their teachers. So they're just some of the reasons, you know, that my vote will be no. Thank you.
This is Phil. Can we, can we just have confirmation on the, the survey? Because I heard mixed, mixed claims that the, the survey did have the, the realization that it would be less than six feet, and some people said it didn't.
Thank you, Mr. Robson. Let me call up, I'm doing it on my phone because it's a little difficult on my computer at this moment, but I could get the actual wording of the survey. You just bear with me for one minute. Okay, here it comes. I'm just going to open a tab on my computer here, so. Okay, and I can actually share my screen now, and we can look at the survey together. And hopefully people can see this now. And so we have, as far as the questions are concerned, the first one, currently all students have six feet of social distancing in their classrooms. With a four-day or five-day per week return to school, distances will be reduced to a minimum of three feet in some cases. I prefer in the near future that my student, so in this question, I think it's fair to say that the, the fact that's three feet is, is possible in some cases was mentioned. That same verbiage was not included in the subsequent questions. Having written the survey, my thought was that, you know, that's the basis for asking the questions in, in the subsequent two. So I think it's fair to say in the first question, it was raised and it was not listed specifically in the second or third.
Okay, I have some questions.
Okay.
Louise, can I, Michelle Tierney, can I speak?
Yep.
Um, I want to revisit the four day. Is it possible for us to consider the four day instead of the five-day option? And take a look at, maybe that would help to have that Wednesday, a full cleaning day with all the buildings to do an extra cleaning and to also give our faculty the opportunity to regroup and to have a little bit of a, a support of, of, you know, finding out what they need to do for their hybrid, their virtual students in the high school and middle school. And just to give everyone in the district that day of, of regrouping. I mean, would that be something that we would consider first? And then if that goes well, maybe by the last two months, we could do the five-day option? I mean, would that be something that we could consider doing first? And my other thoughts were lunch in the room. Someone had mentioned that the cafeteria with taking masks off is going to be a huge issue, and I agree, I think it could be. Is it possible for us to have bag lunches in the, in the homeroom classrooms? So everyone is at their, their, you know, distance and then take their mask off to eat their lunch? That was another suggestion I had and making sure that the district is using every classroom, every space so that we can try to get as close to the six feet distance as possible for all of our students. And to spend this time in advertising for teachers, because I believe that one thing we have learned is our classroom sizes are too large, even on a regular time. I think that we need to have smaller class sizes K through twelve and, and try to find more teachers that we can, in the future, to really work with smaller classes to give a better education. So those are my considerations and thoughts as we go forward to, to vote on this tonight.
Dr. May, I'm also interested in your recommendation of five versus four. I'm sure you must have had a basis for that recommendation. So if we could just hear the just.
Sure. And, yes, no, no doubt, the four days is an easier thing to manage, and it does take a load from our teachers, you know, so we not dispute anything that is said. I, I do think trying to balance the two, that the five-day per week is the better approach for our students and in the community we serve. The continuity of coming in for the full week is very valuable. We see a number of schools that, that are accomplishing this using a hybrid model or back-to-school, the, the same model that we envision using. So, you know, the I, I would not be one to say that it's wrong to use the four days. There is value to that approach. But on balance, I think with respect to the, you know, total question, I, I lean toward the five-day return. Because again, there is value in being back and fully back.
So in a five-day scenario, Dr. Mann, when is the cleaning done?
In the evenings. And, and during the day, people will circulate for sure. But, you know, the cleaning is done in the, as it will be on a four-day per week return to.
So I have heard a, a couple of comments were made about the cleanliness of the schools in general. And, and I'm, I've heard that, that the COVID cleaning, the deep cleaning is being done at the expense of the, the normal cleaning, the emptying of the trash cans, the, you know, cleaning of the desks, that sort of thing. Who does the inspection on a daily basis as to whether or not the cleaning is sufficient?
Yeah, well, first, I, I would invite any board member anytime to walk through the buildings with me to, to look at the cleanliness. I think that, I can't say every trash can is emptied at every moment during the day, but our principals are out, our maintenance supervisors are out, our custodians do have pride in their work. And, and, you know, certainly that does not mean we don't have issues, but as, as I walk the buildings and, and observe, I, I never have a sense that our buildings are, are unclean. And, and again, I would invite anyone anytime to take a walk with me to make those observations.
Dr. May, have there been any outbreaks as a result of us having winter sports? Has that been an issue?
We've not, we've had cases of COVID within our winter sports, but we've, we've not had them in such a way that there's been any outbreaks or any transmission back into the schools that we're aware of. And, and we could, I'm pretty sure we can say that with confidence that we've not seen it spill over into the actual learning environment. But we are, we have not been without challenges with respect to COVID among our winter teams.
So with that, with the winter sports going on and this going back to, if we were to go back to school five days, how quickly can we react to, to where we would have to pull the plug and go back to our prior schedule? I mean, is that something that can be quickly achieved?
Well, I would first say that at, at any point, we can close a building. And, and we've done, I mean, the board knows, we've, you know, got word on late Sunday afternoon and Sunday evening, we've closed the building for Monday. So we will continually be monitoring and, and we could quarantine, and we've quarantined on a day's notice. So, you know, I think probably, Mrs. Boshalsky, the most likely scenario that would require us would be the emergence of one of those variant strains where we would have to just turn on a moment and, and, you know, we, we will be, we are set up that while it's a horrible thing to have our teachers doing all this that we spoke about through the evening tonight, the good thing is that we can really pivot to virtual in, you know, very little time at all.
Yeah, I mean, I, I am of the belief that the kids need to get back to school, and it's worth, it's worth at least trying. I believe we have to at least try. And if, if, if all of these risks prove, if, if it proves to be true, like that there's these terrible risks, I mean, we, we can, we can reverse. I mean, it's not that we can't stop it. But if we don't try, to me, all of these kids are disadvantaged and we haven't even tried. So it's, it's worth trying, as long as we are able to reverse, you know, call, or, you know, put a stop to it. Go back to the virtual, go back to the hybrid. I think we owe it to the kids to, to at least try, just like we're trying the winter sports, and it hasn't been disastrous, but it hasn't come without its challenges. I would see that being the same if we go back to school. I'm, what I'm not sure about is the benefit of four or five. I don't know if it's a, if it just kind of feels better to start out with four, just for the sake of, rather than rushing into the five, it kind of feels better, but I, I, I have to hear more pros and cons to, to that approach to really make that decision, whether it's four or five, but Mr. Acker has, has his hand raised?
Mr. Azar is ahead of me here.
I'm sorry, who is? Oh, I don't, you know, I can't, I can't see everyone. Okay, there you are. I'm sorry, Mr. Azar, you weren't up on my, my little window. Go right ahead.
I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Acker first.
No, please.
Oh, boy.
Age before beauty, please.
Thank you, thank you. So I, I guess I just wanted to underscore again what I mentioned before, as we're all considering this vote. And, and I completely empathize with everybody on the phone that called in and does not want to go back. And I completely empathize with Dr. Cadman. You can't disagree with anybody that has those views. They have every reason to have those views, and they have, they, they can point to all sorts of data that, that supports their views. I felt it was necessary for me to explain why I disagree, and it's not that I think that they're wrong, I don't. I think that I'm making my decision because I'm more fearful. To me, it's what are you more fearful of? We're all afraid of lots of different things. I'm definitely more fearful of the people in this community that are socially disengaged and that are suffering educationally. My kids are, in the grand scheme of things, pretty fortunate, and I can tell you, my kids are definitely suffering educationally. So I can't imagine what some kids are going through educationally, not to mention the mental health issues. And I just don't think that we can even begin to understand which kids are having these issues. Like, we're going to be able to figure out some of them, but there's a lot of kids out there that will never even know if they have issues until it's too late. So I just wanted to articulate that that's the reason why I'm in favor of supporting Dr. Mann's recommendation. Even though I have the same concerns about being inside of six feet, I don't like it either, but my fears are bigger for, for the kids. And I also wanted to, to reiterate that even if we go back four or five days, we have to push and focus on getting rid of hybrid teaching. You know, I saw it with my own eyes last week. It's not good. It's really not good. It's certainly going to be better to get these kids back in school from a mental health standpoint, from a routine standpoint. It's certainly going to be better for many people in the community that want it to get their lives back. But until we invest in getting more teachers or getting more space so that we can have dedicated virtual teachers and social distance, you know, it's, it's going to continue to be a problem that we have to manage. I do, and I, I will support if, if the rest of my colleagues would like to go back five days, I'll support the motion as is. I will tell you that I would lean the other way. I would lean towards not in the elementary schools and not in fifth grade or sixth grade or whatever grades we can figure out to get rid of hybrid teaching. And I think we can figure it out in the middle school too, before the end of the year. Maybe not. I'm certainly not as close to the operations as the administration, but we have to try. And if we ever succeed, I think those grades should be back five days a week. But I would lean, and I, and I emphasize lean towards if we are going to ask our faculty to keep doing what I saw last week, five days a week, that's a big ask. And so I think we owe it to them. If we're going to make that ask, and I would support it, we have to give them a roadmap. And we have to give them at least our reassurances that we are going to do everything we humanly can for September one, for it to be gone. And that they're going to have to give us another day basically for three more months, but next year, we're not, it can't, it can't happen next year. However, we have to invest, whatever we have to do as a board. You know, that, that can't continue.
Well, I, I see it, Rod, as we will, we're not going to have this choice, I think, or I think what we should have is the Abington Heights cyber charter option that we develop and design, whether it's purchasing it or, but that, that was, we've talked about it. There's pros and cons to it, but I think this year has demonstrated the need more, more than ever before. We talked about it years ago and brought it up occasionally, but this year really highlighted. I think that's the answer is, is you develop your own cyber school separate, and then we have our, our regular school, and there won't be a hybrid option. So I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Acker.
No problem at all. You know, first of all, I, I just have to say I am, I am truly in awe of the Abington Heights community. Tonight, we have heard from, I think, every stakeholder in the community. It just speaks to how much they care about our school and the educational process, which, which is great. So no, nobody disagrees that, that full, having kids in school is what, what we need to do. Obviously, the question is how to get there and how to do it as safely as possible. I, I also believe we need to get the kids back in school. And, and I think like you, Mrs. Boshalsky, I think we need to try this. I think we need to do it for five days. I think if the administration started to implement it and realized that was not possible and had to pivot. I, I do think, and, and I, I certainly agree, we need more resources, we need more teachers in particular. I, I, in my own mind, I'm not sure how much of a change this is for the teachers in that. mind, I'm not sure how much of a change this is for the teachers in that currently the teachers are teaching in person and virtually, four days of the five days of the week. So going five days means we're, we're asking them to do it another day already. And secondly, I think from our last meeting, we talked about the fact that in hybrid, there was a big concern that the attendance in hybrid was way down. And I think, Dr. Mann, that was one of the reasons you talked about bringing in those students that are at risk into, into the school. But, so, we're all talking about, well, to stay hybrid, but I'm not sure that's working now to begin with. So I, I do think we need to do something. I recognize this implementation is going to be extremely ragged. I think it's hard for our constituents to visualize coming back five days and they're asking, well, is it three feet or six feet? And the fact of the matter is, it's, it's going to depend. It's going to depend on the situation, the class, the number of students, and really the space available. So I, I think we can expect this to be uneven, ragged, messy, but I, I strongly support trying it.
Yep. Anybody else have any comments before we vote? Or is anybody, do we want to talk a little bit more about the four and five? Right now, the motion is five days.
I just think, what's, is there an appetite for the, for the four day?
That's what I'd like to know.
And also the, the elementary, to go, well, if we go four days, then it would, it would have impacted everybody. So.
Well, I mean, my, my thinking is, I think the issue with the, the reason, the only reason, in my opinion, for going for four days is because of the struggles between doing the virtual and the, and the hybrid. The elementary students already have a dedicated virtual teacher. So I think they can go five days with no, I don't even think, I, I think the elementary was, is, should be a given to go five days because they already have a dedicated virtual teacher. They don't have the same struggles that the middle school and high school, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Mann, but that is, I believe the elementary does not have the same challenge. Is that correct?
Elementary is in a much better position as, as we're talking about, I did not think about a four and a five mix. So, I, I, I agree that elementary would be the best, the best choice to start at five. Perhaps we could start everybody at four and then transition quickly to five with elementary. I just want to make sure with transportation. So for, for example, if we have one group on five and one group on four, we'll be transporting on Wednesdays, one small subset of the larger group. So there's a couple of things I want to run through my mind. And so if, if it's, if it's five, then it's five. If it's four, it's four. I agree that the, the best prospect for five days in the system would be at our elementary, but I'd like not to leave the meeting tonight with a differential. I'd like everybody the same with the commitment that I would get back to everybody and say, all right, look, it's no problem for elementary to be five.
Okay.
Or less.
Well, so convince, convince me that five is better than four. I mean, that.
Before you, before you do that, Dr. Mann, Wednesdays now currently are, there's no transportation. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay, so, so that, so if we were to start four days first and then possibly transition to the five day, the four day would not be an issue with transportation at all because Wednesdays are complete, would be the day that we would be off and there's no transportation. Okay.
Right, right. And, and so, Mr. Prash, here's what I would say, right? I get what the teachers say, and I'm saying these words, and I, my heart is breaking for the teachers who I'm recommending this against, all right? But if I'm a family and if I'm struggling, right, having my student in school five days a week is way better than being in four days a week, right? If, if I am a student whose mental health is at grave risk, or who has failed two subjects at the high school with twenties, and in the past has been doing really well, being in five days is better than being in four days by 20%, right? And so I, I see, it's a fair trade to discuss, but in the end, I, my judgment leans strongly toward getting everybody back. And all of the impact that has on the kids and the, and the families, most especially the families, families who are struggling, who really are scrambling to try to figure out what they're doing with their kids, parents who can then perhaps go look for jobs because they have not been able to do so up until this point. And, and again, I say this, realizing that all the teachers who are listening are saying, how do I do this? Right? They're, they're more of asking me, I have a hard time doing what I'm doing. I get it, but at the end of the day, in my calculus, I'm recommending five days a week, completely respecting four, if that's the, the, and recognizing the value of four, if that's where the board would like to.
I could support, I could support trying the five. I mean, they, I, I'm going to have to trust your administrative, I mean, you're, that's your, that's your area. You know how to manage this district. So I would support trying for five. If the majority of the board wants to go four, I would also support that. I, I need, I think we, we just need to try. That's, that's, that's my only, my only hope.
And I think this is Phil. So in, in the spirit of moving forward and making progress, I think four is a, is an appropriate next step. Because it allows for cleaning, it does it, because there's so much change with five days. It's teachers, it's, it's all the stakeholders are, are impacted. And risk is, is injected into the whole thing. Whereas four days, risk is mitigated a little bit, and it's less massive amounts of change right up front. It'll be a good litmus test as to whether or not it's going to work.
So Phil.
And four is better than two, right? So I know five is better than four, but four is better than two.
Phil, if they started four days and after two weeks of doing the four days, Dr. Mann came back to us and gave us a report and said, I really think we can go five, with that.
Yeah.
I would support that.
Yeah.
I, I still think we should stay at five. Honestly, I think we should, we should do it. I think, at the, yeah, I, I just, I strongly support five.
Yeah, I agree with Warren.
I will support what the majority of the board wants. I, and Dr. Mann's recommendation is five. I will support either of those. To me, it's getting our kids back. It's the options that the majority of our parents are looking for. I think it's important that we look at that and move forward. So whatever the board decides for or five, I'm fine with.
Can we vote on the motion and then have another vote on four or five?
So the motion is five. So if we vote on it, on it and five passes, then it's five. So if five board members vote for five days, then the motion passes. So we can vote on the motion if, and if, I suppose if that motion fails, we can have a new motion for four days if there, if the majority believes that four, is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, I do. I think that's very fair.
Okay, then why don't, is anybody else?
Do you have to reopen the agenda? Because to add another motion?
Yeah, I think Ms. Cad's probably right. So we could, if we vote on the motion, then we would, and if it fails, then someone could make a motion to reopen the agenda. And then they would add the motion to four days. Or, you know, there may be, there may, see, now we're into the parliamentarian stuff, there may be an opportunity to say someone could amend the motion without having to reopen the agenda, which I think is also a reasonable approach. So again, this is where we need a.
To do that, if, if, if you voted down the motion, you can't turn around and amend it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to have a new motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the process is exactly what you described. If you vote down, you've got to open up the agenda.
Yep.
Add a new motion.
Right.
Okay. Well, then why don't, why don't we do a roll call? Mrs. O'Day, bring up for the, Dr. Cadman?
No.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Medensky?
No.
Mrs. Pusiteri?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
No.
Mrs. Tierney?
Yes.
Mr. Acker?
Yes.
Mr. Azar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prasowski? Yes. Motion carries five, yes is four, no's. Okay.
You know, I do want to say, it is hard to be a board member. It is very, very hard to be a volunteer board member. And I thank you all for your dedication tonight. This is hard. This is really, really hard. And, and I thank you. And I think the community is very, has the opportunity to see the dedication that I get to see all the time from everyone on this call. So they're hanging with this and making these hard decisions. And we certainly will do our best to, to deliver for, for our board.
Mrs. Prasowski, can I bring up another point? Though, again, I can't reiterate enough my feeling that we need to get more resources for the school district, teachers and administrators. And we need, we, we need to give the administration the resources they need to hire and find those people. I think that is critically important now and certainly in the, for the future of the school district.
I agree with you, Warren.
Yeah, I completely agree. I obviously struggled with whether we should be at four or five days. And I, I want to echo it again, like, we have to give these teachers a roadmap.
Yep.
I agree.
Yeah, agreed.
So we, we cannot ask them to start the, the next school year on, on the same circumstances. That, that would be, that would be on us.
Yep.
And I will keep the board posted every step of the way. We have an administrative meeting scheduled tomorrow morning to begin the process of implementing the motion that was just passed. And we will keep the board posted. And I would strongly encourage, call me anytime with any of your questions. If you want to come in to see what's going on, you are, you're most welcome to do so. And again, I'm very grateful to the board for very hard decisions that they're making.
And, and, and we are going forward with spring sports?
We are. We are, yes.
And the date, and the date of the spring season is March, first week in March?
I, I don't even know. Mr. Snyder had something on spring sports.
What about a spring letter, a spring commitment from the players not to play on?
Yeah, that, I, I had intended to, that seemed to work in the winter and I, I saw no reason to abandon it for the spring. In fact, I saw that the players that we approved tonight, the, the musical group, they have their own spring promise that they put together for their members. So again, I, it was not flawless. Cases can be made whether we should or we not, but we, we made that decision in the fall. And I, I don't know that circumstances have changed all that much to justify moving away from it. But, you know, certainly that's for the board to.
The one, Mr. Rod Azar speaking, the one thing that I would, that I would throw out there for, and, you know, I, I put the winner promise on the table to try to get us over the, the hump for winter sports. So the reason why I would reconsider it myself is that I think that the Lackawanna Conference in general had a lot of success with masks. And if you look at the Wyman Valley Conference, they had a lot of failures. And there was a big difference between the two conferences. We wore a lot more masks in our conference, I think, and I don't know this for sure. I don't know that there were any other school districts that, that required a promise like we did. You know, I, and I, I don't think we'll ever truly know what the statistical difference is between the promise and the masks. But I, I do know that it, it does impact a lot of families in the school district negatively. And, you know, if, if, if we felt that the statistical difference between masks was, was low, based on the Lackawanna Conference schools in general having a lot of success, I think that it would help a lot of kids that want to participate. So I, I do, I know there's a lot of families, I've heard from them, that are, are not going to participate in Abington Heights sports in the spring, a lot more than I think, you know, we're, we're the numbers in the winter. So.
I, I would be open to revisit this and have more discussion on this. And I would love to hear from our coaches on how they were able to, you know, keep this promise from their students and, and just reopen it so we can get an understanding of all the facts of how it worked well, or if it didn't work well, and what, what the pros and cons are, before we go right ahead and say we're going to do it one way or the other. I'd like to have open discussion on that. So let's leave that out there on the table.
I think that's, I think that's appropriate.
Thank you.
I would agree.
All right. So maybe we could add that to our work session. Although I'm wondering if spring sports would be starting pretty close to that.
We could always add it in. We could always add it in.
So are, are we, are we holding off on the spring? Because I, I think, my, my guess is, if we're going to pull back, our athletes need to know, like, very soon, because if they're making plans for the spring to participate in other activities, those decisions probably are being made or soon to be made, if they're not made already. I mean, I, I don't know if anyone has any thought. Just razor, is my correct in saying like?
There's definitely, there are definitely a number of families that are writing checks for private coaching and private leagues that are coming up that are asking, are they going to be asked to sign this promise? So that's, that is, that is true. You, you know, so that's, that's a factor.
So, Mr. Azar, your recommendation would be to modify it or to not do it?
So I would, I would probably recommend we modify it and not restrict the athletes from the private training that we restricted them from. I'd still like to get a promise that they're going to do everything they can to.
Yes, that, that's. But that's what I like about it is, is we, we are basically making sure that the young people know this is serious stuff we're dealing with here, and we have to take it seriously.
Dr. Mann, why don't you send a draft out to the board of what the promise currently states so that, and then we can review it?
Right. And I don't want to complicate this late hour. I will say, we did, we have, just as Mr. Prasowski, you asked about our sports, we have seen COVID go through these AAU teams, like those, when we look at our contact tracing, there have been, there are, there are more issues in the non-Abington Heights sports than there are in Abington Heights sports.
Right. So, so I'm actually, my concern, my number one concern is to get our kids back to school and not to do anything that would jeopardize that. So if the, I, I understand the concern parents would have with wanting, not wanting to limit their students or their children from other things, but this, the promise, keeping them within Abington Heights, the benefit is, it mitigates the risk of shutting down our schools. And I, so I want to look at it more closely because I really want to look.
Yeah, I, I will send it out. I'm, I'm not feeling strongly one way or the other.
I would just, one thing I would add, Doc, Ms. Prasowski, is the, that is true. Like, there's no doubt, there's, this is, there's a statistical benefit of, of risk mitigation. I, the reason why I question it is that we've got a lot of families, and this was true in the winter too. So, but we have a lot of families that have lots of kids, and they've got one kid signing the promise, and they got two other kids that are doing youth sports. And so within the household, there's a whole lot of people that they're.
I understand that, but I, I, I'm.
Yeah, I think the goal is to get our students back five days a week, and then we'll worry about our sports later. Let's get the draft and look at, review it and see where we go from there.
Right. That's what, yeah. That's my, so, yeah, send the draft out to us, and we'll, we'll.
I, I will also, the superintendents are advocating strongly now that we're going to district playoffs. Mr. Azar pointed out, schools down the way are not wearing masks, Lackawanna County is. And we are advocating very strongly to demand that if we're playing sports, other teams are wearing masks like they're, like the rules say they're supposed to. So.
Oh, yes.
For another night. But that's a.
Yeah.
A source of concern for many people. So, all right, everybody?
Uh, this pledge, though, is, is an honor system. And we're hoping that they all do it. And what happens if, okay, we allow them to go and play AAU and you go and see a game and they're not wearing masks? Do you report the child or the student and then say, well, you can't play for Abington now because you violated your, your agreement which you signed, which is in essence a contract? So, I mean, this gets a little tricky here. We're trying to do these things for the right reasons. And, and, you know, I know it's difficult to make that hard stand, but I, I do believe sometimes you have to make that hard stand. And yes, you know, families are letting their kids go and play here, but the other one's got to sign a promise that he can't. Well, you know, that, that's their prerogative. But it sends the wrong message.
Well, to stay positive with sports, spring sports, except for boys volleyball are all outside. So that's a huge plus.
Right, it is.
Right.
I mean, do we believe that the winter pledge worked?
That would be down the road. That's why I want to have more.
Of what they were saying about other conferences, you watch the games and they're not wearing masks.
What they were saying about other conferences, you watch the games and they're not wearing masks. And they're into a little bit more of a problem with COVID versus Lackawanna League, which is, are wearing masks or at least attempting to. Uh, there is a difference.
So, and we don't know if it works.
Well, that's the ma- the math.
We're not going to know if it works yet. The season's not over yet.
Well, that's true too.
So that's why, that's why I said, let's get the draft, let's look at it, let's, let's get an update from our coaches and from the athletic director on how well it worked. And we'll go from there.
I'm, I'm sure it's going to be ambiguous. We're, we're not going to be able.
It's almost, it's almost eleven o'clock, guys.
It is indeed.
Okay, any new business? Old business?
Oskey, I just want to correct my count on that last motion. It was carried six, three, and I said five, four, so I just want to correct the count.
Okay.
Oh, six, three with the five days? Oh, okay, great, okay, thanks, Sue.
All right, can I have a motion adjourned?
Adjourned, good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.